If it be transferring the post, I can watch.
Right, I'm just saying. Thanks, I've made you the one. So if there are people trying to see me, now I see what you mean. Oh, and. Chad, hey.
I think that's the day's plan.
Tom, here.
Louis, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Sound okay?
Yeah. New system? I can't hear the other counselors though.
Their mics are muted.
Yes, you're not very loud, but like maybe it's my end here. Hold on. No, I'm full volume. But yeah, I can hear you clearly.
Louis, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Sound okay?
Yeah. New system? I can't hear the other counselors though.
Their mics are muted.
Yes, you're not very loud, but like maybe it's my end here. Hold on. No, I'm full volume. But yeah, I can hear you clearly.
Louis, can you hear me?
Yes, you're not very loud, but like maybe it's my end here. Hold on. No, I'm full volume. But yeah, I can hear you clearly.
Thank you.
Louis, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Sound okay?
Yeah. New system? I can't hear the other counselors though.
Their mics are muted.
Louis, can you hear me?
Yes, you're not very loud, but like maybe it's my end here. Hold on. No, I'm full volume. But yeah, I can hear you clearly.
Louis, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Sound okay?
Yeah. New system? I can't hear the other counselors though.
Their mics are muted.
Louis, can you hear me?
Yes, you're not very loud, but like maybe it's my end here. Hold on. No, I'm full volume. But yeah, I can hear you clearly.
Louis, can you hear me?
Yes, you're not very loud, but like maybe it's my end here. Hold on. No, I'm full volume. But yeah, I can hear you clearly.
Louis, can you hear me?
Yes, you're not very loud, but like maybe it's my end here. Hold on. No, I'm full volume. But yeah, I can hear you clearly.
Ever did sound check? Alrighty, if everyone's set. I can call this regular town council in order if I get a roll call please.
Derek Lee.
Here.
Frackton.
Here.
Danfor.
Here.
Here.
Helen, here, you're here?
Yes, but I hear my name.
Helen, here?
Here.
Right.
Here.
Legion, through the flag, United States of America, to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone, there is some justice agenda, there's updates to order number 2022. Addition to town manager board, and order of. That's the part 24. Regular meeting. Discussion. Official by council, by and second by council, or. All those, all those give it, council pay. Hi.
Hi.
Chairman.
Hi.
I have council here.
Hi, volume breaks up a bit.
I think the volume's breaking up.
Yeah, I think you may have to speak closer to your mics.
Try. With that, just. We have an out of rotation order here. Have someone speak on behalf of Millinocket Extreme Canoe Race. So the council here, if I could have you read, order number 68, 2022, please.
Certainly, order 68, 2022, providing for donation to Millinocket Extreme Canoe Race. It is ordered that the town manager is authorized to extend from account. E zero eight one six three eight one three, $420 to support the first ever Millinocket Extreme Canoe Race. Note, this will go toward the purchase of the Finish Line banner, see attached letter of request from race coordinator Chris Howell.
Official by council, here. Discussion with council, I know that we have a member of that year, which is part of the. I want to have Chris come up and speak at this.
Hello guys, can you hear me?
A little bit, speaking into your mic a bit more.
How about that? Can you hear me better now?
Much better.
That is perfect, that is perfect.
Okay, I was having a hard time hearing the first gentleman speaking. Hi guys, I hope you're all doing well. I got a, just wanted to tell you guys about the race a little bit and how it started. First, my name's Chris, I've been working as a guide on the Penobscot River since 2009. And I currently manage North Country Rivers, which is right behind the lake store there up at the Big Moose. So I had the idea for the race today, or well, this fall. They're going through a little bit of relicensing with Brookfield and Ripogena Dam and the Millinocket Stream and all that. And, you know, I had the idea of trying to start a race because the Millinocket Stream is perfect. And it's a really underutilized resource in the region for whitewater recreation. I've done a lot of paddling down through the stream myself. You know, over the last decade or so, and it's pretty much perfect for, you know, kind of a higher level. Venue for a whitewater canoeing kayaking paddle boarding race. And I've partnered up with some other. Nonprofit organizations right in Millinocket, some of you guys probably heard of, the major partner is OSI, Outdoor Sports Institute. And they're helping me with a lot of stuff, getting a website together to help me, you know, be able to do pre-registration for the race and they can take payment online to help cover registration costs and insurance costs. The race is insured. Through the American Canoe Association. And currently what I'm working on now, what I was kind of working on in the last couple of months was trying to get some sponsors for the race to, you know, generate prizes and some donations to help get the race off the floor. NEOC and Matt Polstein is, he was really supportive from the beginning, he's one of the major sponsors and kind of looking at more retail sponsors that can help generate prize, we obtained prizes from NRS, which is the largest whitewater retailer in the country. Also immersion research and they make a bunch of whitewater gear and stuff like that. The thing I'm working on right now is trying to build a safety team. For the race, I'm trying to get, you know, eight to 10 individuals. Just to help, you know, sit along some of the bigger rapids along the run. Just be able to provide safety, so if people were to, you know, take a dump into the river out of their canoe, there would be someone there to help them at some of the more major rapids. And we're still looking for volunteers. We got a couple spots for people, just to sit on a bridge off the Stacyville Road and we're just with the vehicle. Just in case, you know, somebody fell out of their canoe and they got really cold and need to get out of the river, had to get a ride to the hospital or something, there would be a designated person at those bridges. You know, just to, just in case someone needs to get a ride out. So we still need a few of them and some on water safety. Thanks for Andy, I see your comment there. You know, and I've been personally covering all the costs for the race. From anywhere from, you know, getting t-shirts for the race. You know, all these different fees I've had to pay for getting all these permits. You know, getting the insurance and all that stuff. And I'm still just looking for just a little bit more to help with the banner cost and trying to find a connection to look for some food donations because we're looking to have a nice barbecue right at the end of the race. And that would be for everybody, you know, just a simple hot, you know, hamburgers, hot dogs and some soda pop and stuff like that. I've been trying to be in touch with Hannah first about a donation for them, I've had no luck as of yet. But yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions, I didn't want to ramble at you guys too much, but wanted to give you a quick rundown. But if there's any questions about the race, I'd be happy to answer anything you guys have.
Organizing all. Thank you, Chris. Right off of that when I saw this. I was very excited, I'm all about the river. It is under five. Pick off there. Looks quite easy, but this will be a great addition. What are, wishing you the best of luck with this.
Oh, I'm having a hard time, I was trying to type into the thing here, I can't hear anything. That was just, that is very, very.
That's what I was trying.
That was a lot better for Chris.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris, it's an interesting proposal and certainly it has a lot of merit to it. My question would be, where would the start and finish line be for this race?
Oh, I meant to go over that part, it's a great question, so it's going to start right up at Millinocket Lake Dam. The start for the first racer is going to be about noon. And I'm estimating it's going to take most people two, three hours to get through the course and they're going to go all the way down to Kermit Crandall Park. So the banner, I was hoping, I was able to take a ride up there a few weeks ago. And I was hoping to have the banner strung across the river. Between, you know, get some cordage to come from the trees on either riverbank and then support this large banner at the bottom. And I was almost hoping it would be in view of the main bridge right there on 157 coming down the hill. Because I think, you know, it'd be neat to kind of have there, nice finish.
I agree, I, I, having it inside, finishing in the, in the community itself, I think is a good for. So I wish you the best of luck and welcome tonight for your request for the town health. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, Councilor, Councilman Brett. You to the general election, Councilman Brett.
Thank you, Councilman Brett. Chris, thank you for the letter that you sent along to provide that information, done a tremendous amount of work, like work before you brought this to the council. Appreciate all that work and the partners that you're collaborating with, you know, you talked about OSI, the gear library, walking, walking public health, you read on target, you know, things we want to see. And have available to our community, for those who want to support, or, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, and for Councilman Brett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, I, I've been suggesting that we do this for a number of years and I've looked on Google, where the water that stream, there's a fair amount of that stream that's got to be cleared up. Have you talked with the Land Use Planning Commission or any of the groups in the unorganized, that would cover the unorganized territory and impact of clearing out for some of the degree?
Yes, I have, I have received a permit from the unorganized, the Penobscot County Unorganized Territory Commission. You know, that permit was granted, there was no conversation about, you know, removing any trees or anything like that. I also have talked with Mike Osborne from Brookfield about accessing up there. And he would seem to be okay with that as long as people aren't, you know, monkeying all around the dam, that's what they're mostly concerned about. And we'd be putting in well below the dam, well, by about a hundred yards. And we have, one of the big projects I do have planned for before the race, I'm hoping it will start in early May, is to actually get a group of volunteer paddlers to go down and remove wood out of the river. To just reduce the hazard of people being hung up in there. And again, I was having, I can mostly hear everything everyone's saying, but I'm really straining. So I hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you, it does, thank you. That, that does, thank you very much, have you talked to the invasion landowners?
I have not talked to any landowners right there, I have been in contact with Scott McDonald, who does have a camp up, it's up that fire road where people would access. And he's going to help with timing of the race, but I haven't talked to any other landowners, it's just been Brookfield and the Unorganized Territory Commission. And so the other plan, I had to reduce traffic up there, I've been on my flyers, I've been pretty clear that we're frowning upon anybody parking up there. We're going to be using some raft buses and some vans and canoe trailers to help transport people. Thank you, guys.
Chris, thank you for the letter that you sent along to provide that information. Done a tremendous amount of work, like work before you brought this to the council. I appreciate all that work and partners that you're collaborating with, you know, you talked about OSI, the Gear Library, Walk Back to Public Health. You read on target, you know, things we want to see and have available to our community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, I've been suggesting that we do this for a number of years and I've looked on Google where there's that stream and there's a fair amount of that stream that's got to be cleared up. Have you talked with the Land Use Planning Commission or any of the groups in the unorganized, that would cover the unorganized territory and impact of clearing off some of the debris?
Yes, I have. I have received a permit from the unorganized, the Penobscot County Unorganized Territory Commission. You know, that permit was granted. There was no conversation about, you know, removing any trees or anything like that. I also have talked with Mike Osborne from Brookfield about accessing up there. And he would seem to be okay with that as long as people aren't, you know, monkeying all around the dam. That's what they're mostly concerned about. And we'd be putting in well below the dam by about a hundred yards. And we have one of the big projects I do have planned for before the race. I'm hoping it will start in early May is to actually get a group of volunteer paddlers to go down and remove wood out of the river. To just reduce the hazard of people being hung up in there. And again, I was having, I can mostly hear everything everyone's saying, but I'm really straining. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. It does. Thank you. That does. Thank you very much. Have you talked to the invasion landowners?
I have not talked to any landowners right there. I have been in contact with Scott McDonald, who does have a camp up, it's up that fire road where people would access. And he's going to help with timing of the race, but I haven't talked to any other landowners. It's just been Brookfield and the Unorganized Territory Commission. And so the other plan I had to reduce traffic up there. I've been on my flyers. I've been pretty clear that we're frowning upon anybody parking up there. We're going to be using some raft buses and some vans and canoe trailers to help transport people up from the, from Kermit Crandall Park, because it is a very limited parking area up there. And if we can get everybody on a bus, you know, it kind of reduces a lot of wear and tear on the road and stuff like that.
It's all audio issues.
Sorry about that, everyone. We'll try and fix that. Anyone here in person that have a comment?
Randy Jackson.
Chris, have you talked to Outdoor Sports Institute at all? They have some trailers and gear and the gear hub from the library might be able to help. Without their, but you know, that's what they're kind of all about.
Yes, I have direct contact with Mike Smith a fair amount. He's doing actually quite a bit to help this race in numerous ways. And they are planning on letting us use their trailer.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. And just a reminder, if anyone from the public wants to speak, say your name and address. Any other public comment? Seeing none, back to the council favor, Councilor.
Hi.
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 And with that moves us to our, and Chris, thank you very much for this and for being here.
Yeah, absolutely. I really appreciate you guys having me here.
Good luck.
Absolutely.
And I'm going to do a special presentation. We have Rick and others here visiting Mainwater. She came to rate and increase updates and she wanted to come and address herself.
Yes, good evening. My name is Mark Finore with Mainwater and we are Rick Nolan and we should look superintendent. We have filed with the main commission for a rate increase. And the rate increases really as a result of an earlier order from the main public utilities commission concerning the Tax Cut and Jobs Act in 2017. And what the Tax Cut and Jobs Act did was lower the corporate tax rates. At the time, we began to approve those savings in regulatory assets. With the goal of returning that to customers at the next general rate. And the commission agreed with that and asked us to come in no later than the spring of 2022 with that next general rate. So we went ahead and filed that and I think if you've seen the notice to customers, the notice to customers kind of outlines what the impacts overall are. And what that works out to is a total proposed increase of 14.47%. We're able to return that credit, as I mentioned, which is 8.35% over the course of the first year of that rate. So that works out to a first year impact of 6.12% and there are a lot of numbers there. And if you look at that more specifically for an average customer, an average customer's current quarterly bill is $88 and some change. The proposed quarterly bill for the first year with the rebate is $93. So $5.39 increase per quarter. With the second year increase, that would be $100. So overall, if you look at all of that, for that two-year period when we landed at the final rate increase of 14%, it's roughly $12 a quarter or $4 a month. With respect to the process ahead of us, town has intervened in that process before the Public Utilities Commission. And if, we always encourage comments either from those who are here tonight or other members of the community. You're also members of the community, also represented in the case by the public advocate. And we had invited the public advocate to join us tonight. Sure if, if they're on the screen, there are not. But we've included information in the public notice to reach out to public advocate and certainly encourage that. The commission has set a proposed schedule. We're in the phase of discovery right now, which is testimony and discovery. So that'll go on over the course of the next couple of months. With hearings on the case probably scheduled the fall. Final decision, if it winds through the entire litigation process, probably in late October. With that, I turn to Rick for some maybe more in-depth of the system and what we've been doing over the course of the number of years here.
Good evening. I'm Mark Nolan from Mainwater. Thank you for the invitation to talk to you tonight and answer your questions. The whole council, this is not the favorite part, but a fun part of what we do, but it's a necessary part, just as you've set the municipal budget here. We have financial obligations to, like the wastewater system and other public works in town, most of our business is fixed cost business. I was here when we built a new treatment plant back in 2010. Here, soon there's ownership to remain more, prior to the system in previous general water. So I have been around for a while and it's nice to be back in town. But in the last dozen years or almost, we haven't had any general rate increases per se. The last time the rates were adjusted formally was in 2012. And if you look at the revenues that were allowed in that case and compare them to the revenues that we are actually receiving today, you'll notice that they have an increased search. So like the town, we continue to be challenged by lack of growth and reality so over the last decade. So we have done quite a bit of work to make sure for the mission that we're spending capital appropriately and that we're being sensitive to the community's budget challenges. We have asked for an increase that does catch up on the last decade from that perspective. While we have had the use of a surcharge over the last 10 years, which is a a way to recover a portion of capital investments, we've done a number of them working. And most importantly, coordinating the wastewater department, but also repairing necessary pieces of our infrastructure, edge system. Our number one job is to make sure we make great water every day. And we keep the tanks full, so the fire protection services are provided and public health is protected. We have a staff of four in town, David Micho, travels back and forth between our water system and the water. That's one way we're saving money. That was one of the reductions we made in 2011. But those two water systems are very comparable. They use the same water treatment technology. They're about the same size, similar towns in their transitions from paper mill operations to new economy. So David's quite familiar with Millinocket up here. And he's been with us for over 20 years. Are you buying maybe 30? 30. So the rate notices, Mark said, does go through the fact that we've invested over $2 million various improvements in the system since the last case. And this proposal does catch us up mostly with changes in labor expense, benefits and cost of outside contractors and other general expenses. Especially we see person power bills go up, chemicals and power are the second and third expense. And both of those items are up. So this is the proceeding where we make a proposal and defend it in front of the commission. As Mark said, we invite your participation in the process. The public advocate's job is also to challenge our proposal and to question the numbers. They will do their job as we go through the process, as will the staff. Probably the best thing we could do tonight is answer your questions. Happy to do that.
Thank you for being here, presenting all of the council personnel. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did you know, back when, last time that a rate increase back in 2012, we had the Public Utilities Commission hearing here, oh, meeting. And I testified that one while I was the president manager of the time speaking. And we made the appeal then that the town had fallen a lot of difficult times, building closed, people moving out. Wasn't time when the point was high. It wasn't time to go ahead and have a rate increase. And the argument that was given at the time by the company was we weren't using enough water. And so we had to shut down. You won, we lost. You've got the rate increase at that time. Now, this rate increase here, as I read through it and I looked at it and I read through the material that was provided online as well as this. This is going to eventually adhere to the, I want to, I don't want to over-traditize it. For a community that has a high retirement and elderly population. People who are on a fixed income, people who are trying to head into homes that is rate increasing. Definitely something hard to think about, especially I understand you have expenses. I truly, I understand everybody now is facing crunch of having supplies cost more and for the same loss of revenue. However, following your general trend, try not to generate that. And so, again, as much as I understand and appreciate what you've put out here and the investment probably was better, better for your own, but well, so I will be posing here of seeing the testimony again, as I did back in the last increase with
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for coming up. Thanks for being here. Could you share some additional figures with us? You explain in here that you're replacing 600 running feet on your feet of the pipeline. How much more do you have to go replace all of the old pipeline that we have?
There's the same miles to go before we sleep. The distribution system encompasses about 28 miles of pipeline of about 150,000. And a rule of thumb for water utilities is to budget and schedule a 1% replacement rate on annual basis, meaning the water distribution system will take 100 years to replace, maintain that 1%. So a 1% replacement rate would be about 1,500 feet of pipe a year. And we're doing a little less than half of that. One of the things that we did agree to do in the last rate increase, we'll be taking this in this proposal for the commission is to actually reduce our full allowance of depreciation expense and capping that at about $100,000. So the normal rate of depreciation would allow higher numbers than that, which would increase rates even more. And we've said we can manage our capital investment at a lower level than we normally would in recognition of the position of the town. We have the same belief that you do, that Millinocket's great days are on the way and we'll be patient. We have been patient to do so. So we are not managing Millinocket assets in the same way that we do other assets because of the capital investment necessary to do that. We are not being aggressive. If something needs to be replaced, we will. And that's evident in the last 10 years and the investments that we, that we have made and will continue. But it's, we're, we're running a little less than half of what we would normally budget in terms of distribution system.
So you do around 1,500 feet normally.
That's, that would be our budget target. We're doing 600.
So you're doing how much of this repair, this 600 feet is caused by destruction? Wrappers or versus being planned or scheduled?
Well, we plan and schedule based on a set of criteria. So we look at first and foremost breaks and leaks in the system that do cause emergency repairs, which are expensive. So every time a pipe breaks in town, that's logged, that's recorded, it happens that. We get an assessment of the condition of the pipe when we repair that break. And we have a point system that looks at history of breaks and leaks. We look at hydraulic capacity, so fire protection flows and we look at our quality. That's what we test across the distribution system. So there is corrosion that happens in old line cast iron names. It's a significant portion of Millinocket system and a significant portion of most. We also look at coordination. As I said, we've done most of the work in the last 10 years coordinating with wastewater department and with departments in town so that we're not digging over here while you're digging over there. And we try and coordinate every time we can so that we're on one street together and can save money together in the restoration process because the restoration expense used to be less significant and now it's, it's most of the cost of the work is the restoration and not the pipe.
What's your ratio of income versus your plan maintenance?
Our investment in Millinocket right now, we have revenues currently of about $1.2 million a year. And we invest between $300,000 and $400,000 a year in our system. The request is to go to a revenue rate of $1.45 billion a year. And that's to maintain that level of capital.
I want to thank you for that information. Probably will have some follow-up questions, maybe either of the state level ones we have at first. I do want to comment in reference to the proof that you've got here. You've got a great group of guys working in the system and paying attention to emergencies and everything else. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilor. I fully agree with you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other Councilor comments? Thank you, Governor. Any other Councilman Connor question? You mentioned that energy is probably your second biggest expense. Where geographically do you have the biggest draw on power?
Oh, it's it's almost exclusively at the water treatment facility.
And how aggressive have you been in seeking third party power to buy?
We've been negotiating private power purchases for over twenty years since the system started. We have a current contract with Constellation Energy that runs through the end of next year. Twenty twenty three for the water treatment plant, not for not for the booster station on Central Street, but water treatment plant. It's it's the only medium sized account in person scheme that we have. So we have about eight accounts in town. The one account at the treatment plant is almost ninety percent of our loads. That's at a fixed rate contract through next year. At what today is a very attractive rate, it's a little less than seven cents per hour. Electricity components, but that is going away. You'll be negotiating, we started the negotiations already, but it's. It's it's a tough negotiation. We will not be able to foster that electricity cost.
I'm sure we're the community solar projects and others that have pretty good advantages, so I'm sure you're looking at that as well.
Yes, indeed.
Thank you. Any other Councilman comment or question? Anyone from the public have any questions or comments?
There's several in the chat. A lot of them are sound. It is time for the town to take over the water as we did with the sewer. It is time for the town to take over the water as we did with the sewer that's Randy Jackson. Sharon Decker, I agree with Randy, we have bad water quality that they can't seem to fix. Why give them more money for nothing in return? Susan D. Alessandro, all I hear are banking terms and accounting terms. And it sounds an awful lot like the increase is just because we can. We've been charged for water infrastructure charge on top of the last increase. I still don't I still don't hear any justification. Not to mention the water quality leaves a lot to be desired.
More than welcome to respond or if you have other public comments.
No, I'd be happy to. One comment was about the surcharge. There is a water infrastructure surcharge that come in every customer's bill. Right now it's about eight percent on top of the base rates that were set back at the recent twenty twelve. Those dollars are derived entirely from the investment in placement assets. It doesn't address changes in labor costs, changes in chemical costs, changes. Any operating or maintenance expense at all simply supports. The cost of capital of the new investment in the placement asset. That's where the surcharge numbers are derived from. So it's been a nice mechanism to allow ten years between ratings. Because it's it allows us to capture the cost of that new investment. Keep some of the some of the pain from the larger process. Water quality complaints, I would always encourage and ask customers to please call our office at any time. Satisfied with water quality. We test continuously as we produce water every day. We test on a routine basis around the water distribution system. But we have an old delivery system and then that water goes through old plumbing systems. So what you see in your tab and what we produce at the treatment plant. Water quality can be great and we'd like to be able to try and identify why, like to be able to help. So customers have water quality concerns. One eight hundred two eight seven one six four three. Please call the office and let us come out and take a look. See if we can take our.
Thank you very much. And thank you to the public who comes in on chat. And we have another public comment, please come up.
It's about my license. I might instruct all of you, please. Question to the Capitol. That's a water rate build up. What else should I agree? It's an open question. I'm asking what's the sewer rate? Based on water rate. I remember the big increase of twelve. Yeah, two thousand twelve. Went from, I believe, three hundred. Six hundred cubic feet. It was a minimum charge and everybody built. Still didn't sue her. As mentioned, I asked. The only fixed income. So what part of the increase can take that away? On many of the increases. So my question about the sewer increase. We move more people. And we seem to now become federal government. States also. Federal government has been emphasizing. Finding end of. So I'm curious if you have those. How that impacts or could impact your increase? The reasons needed.
Thank you. Happy to try and adjust some of that. Rick noted again. And Councilman Dory brought this up as well, just for reference, in the twenty twelve rate increase, the last time we. One of the most contentious components of that. Was a change in rate design. We did two things at the same time. We raised our revenue and then we changed the way that rates were structured. At the time, our minimum residential bill. Forced every customer to buy a hundred gallons of water today, whether you used it or not. Twelve hundred cubic feet. And. The average residential use in Millenocket has declined substantially. Used to be thirty years ago, people would use a hundred fifty or a hundred sixty gallons a day on average. Today they use in Millenocket is less than a hundred gallons a day. It's actually about ninety six gallons of water. And so we. Proposed and were approved to change the rate structure. So that the minimum bill no longer forced every customer. To buy a hundred gallons of water a day, even if you used it. We reset the minimum bill to include only twenty five gallons. And that changed dramatically in our mind the equity of our water bills where. At a hundred pounds of water a day included in the minimum bill, we had over half of the bills that we sent out. At consumption levels, actual consumption levels that were less than a hundred gallons of water. So of those people, more than half of the bills that we sent out. Were subsidizing those who use more water because the rates they were paying for water that they bought. And in our minds, at twenty five gallons of water a day included. There are only about ten percent of our goods that go out at what will go back amount. Basically, those are folks who are gone for the winter for a substantial part order that we go on. So the current structure. Basically says pay for what you use. If you use fifty gallons of water a day, that's what you pay for. If you use seventy five gallons of water a day, that's what you pay for. If you use two hundred gallons of water, that's what you pay for. And that was a tough transition for the town. People perceived that as as a double whammy at the time. Here, people were getting rate increase and then we were taking water out. And it was a it was a difficult discussion, I think probably is the best way to say it, council. But that structure is in place today. And if you get a minimum bill from us, which is twenty five gallons of water a day. Right now you pay about seventy seven dollars. Which is over ninety days roughly eighty cents a day. That's going to go up by about five dollars. Or a dollar sixty a month. Again, it's it's. It's a small increase to start writing it down to the dollars per gallon. You're well below a doll, a penny a gallon. Every moment. When we're done with this process, not after the first year and net of credit. And the second credit's exhausted. The bill for a hundred gallons of water to your home every day. Be a hundred dollars and eighty two cents a quart. That's a dollar a day. That's a penny a gallon. That's those are the numbers. So we're at above eight tenths of a cent of a gallon now and we're going to one second. Over the process of this proposal. Now, in percentage terms, that's significant. In dollars terms, we're talking about. As Mark said. A dollar to two dollars a week in changes in water. For the same consumption. And it's in line with water bills in the state. It's not unrealistic to think that a dollar a day is a. Public water, Public Utilities Commission. Sorry. Public Utilities Commission keeps a record of all the water bills, all the water utilities that they ran in state. And you will find that Millenocket's bill today and post proposed. Right in line with our utility in state. So I actually have some. Some pride in the fact that we've been able to edge ourselves away from rate increases, substantial rate increases over the last decade. While still maintaining the system, still investing in the system. We have a great crew town, want to be able to maintain that level of service. Because I what I do know is that you need us to make great water. You need us to keep the tanks full. Because a day without water is the day none of us want to have to address. I would rather be here talking about what it costs to do our job well than the mistakes we did. Or the events that happened when we didn't do that.
Thank you for answering that. And from the town perspective, your your question about wastewater increasing. We are actually going through the budget season very soon. We're going to talk about our budget. That'd be a good time to have the wastewater director to speak to where we're at with that. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, there was one piece of question I didn't address at all, and that was about the infrastructure money that's coming out of Washington. You're absolutely right. There's a significant amount of new infrastructure dollars coming to. To the state of Maine and to every state. For water utilities, for wastewater utilities, for transportation. Over the next five years. There will be approximately fifty million dollars a year added to what's called the state drinking waters revolving fund, state revolving fund. And that revolving fund. Has programmatic components to protect source waters and to do capacity development, for example. But the bulk of it goes to infrastructure replacement and capital projects to maintain water systems. And we made application to that program for funding to make some treatment improvements here in Millenocket. We hope we'll be successful carrying that through. And that will give us. More consistent quality from treatment. The treatment plant, as Mr. Dory knows, was built in nineteen ninety three. When the demand for water in Millenocket set a difference. It's designed to produce a million gallons of water. Currently, our average daily demand is less than three hundred thousand gallons of water a day. So we run very slow and and it's not as efficient as we wanted to be. And in fact, at times it's a challenge to make good water running for a year. Almost easier to run full speed and be more efficient. They could talk about that all night, I'm asking too, but. Needless to say, this infrastructure funding may in fact come to Millenocket. And provide benefits so that we can bring the efficiencies to the treatment process that we don't have today. But that's not part of the chase that we filed. That's not part of this proceeding. That would be a future discussion when we know it's real.
Thank you for addressing that. Councilman Dory?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going back to the previous rate hike and you brought situation of the matter of consumption. And yes, when the bill changed and standard hundred gallons. To the consumption rate we have now are the. The rate increase was at the time was dramatic enough that people who were using, say, fifty, sixty gallons of water or in that vicinity. They saw no relief by going at the rate increase back up to the price of a hundred that they were being charged. In the meantime, people who were using a hundred or more saw the rate increase being quite significant. So there was a there was a double whammy in the fact that. Even though you had adjusted the usage numbers, the increase had offset. For a great part, a lot of those numbers on there now. One of the arguments made by the town of Millenocket at the time, the hearings, that those offsets, there was no real saving. Basically, what it is was penalizing people. It was punishing the people who were using less water and really hitting the people who were using over a hundred gallons a time. Because of the rate increase. Offset drop from a hundred gallons of usage on the bill. Anyway, I just want to make that very clear that even though. It did make the adjustment increase at the time more than adjusted. The billings so that most of the majority of the people in Millenocket did not see any significant savings from that. On the quite the contrary, actually saw their bills go up. And Mr. Chairman.
Governor, Governor Frank.
Are you?
No, I was going to say this for a second. Thank you. You've got quite a rare question and you presented yourself very well in this presentation. I will have to say that, you know, even someone from our town per day, really going to be over ten dollars at a time. Over. Area that does play a part in track. Without being certain too, I'm actually drinking water, yeah, I can say from you guys. So nothing's happened yet. And and with that, I do want to, farly proximal from the actual treatment facility in Millenocket. But I do drink water right out of the tap. I trust the water in this beginning. Job. When it does come to these rate increases, something that, you know, is unfortunate. What we have to do today is there are increases everywhere and a part of. Not getting increases that you need to maintain. Infrastructure that have in a that somewhere else. And. Now, budgets were and then board health, but many service. Service workers in the area forced. Or, but I bet there used to be more at one point. So I'd hate to see more reductions in that area. Or on the infrastructure itself. So I'm dreaming this now, but they will see. Thank you very much again.
Thank you, Governor. Governor Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Trent. How many municipalities does Maine Water Serve in the state?
Maine Water serves twenty five different municipalities from Millenocket, Greenville, south to interfered in the South. And along coastal plain and Rockport, Tompkins, Rockland area and in central Maine. Scotty, even. So we have, we serve a population of about eighty thousand people in Maine. We have a staff of eighty professionals and our business structure is set up with. business structure is set up with local operators and professionals uh and a back office designed to bring to Millenocket engineering, management, financial skills that you might not otherwise have if we tried to staff it as the Millenocket operation by itself.
Of those eighty community or
Twenty five.
Twenty five communities, eighty thousand. Okay, talking about the investment, infrastructure investment. Overall, those facilities, will you break Millenocket in a preference of priority and having to have worked on that you would apply for some of that infrastructure money?
I would say that Millenocket as an overall water system is in actually very good shape. The heart of the water system is the water treatment plan. And you have a robust water treatment. Uh you have a you have a extraordinary capacity which is reported upon uh for water supply. It's got a high color content to it. It makes it a little tricky to take all the tannins out. Um and our challenge at the water treatment facility isn't capacity, it's efficiency. So our goal is to make it more efficient at current demands versus what it was designed to do. Uh and that takes investment. But in general terms, uh the water treatment plant is uh less than forty years old. And in water utilities years, that's young. Uh it it doesn't take the abuse that the wastewater facility does, for example. Uh or your transportation assets from streets. They are long line assets. They're designed to last for seventy five to one hundred years.
Oh, no, you're doing this. Uh you have a deal addressing about six hundred feet instead. Where you should be doing fifteen hundred. Oh, 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 and how far behind are you? Keeping up with that ideal situation with?
I think instead of putting it in terms of years, let me try and put it in terms of dollars. One of the things that that has changed is the cost of pipe replacement. It used to be that it was about a million dollars a mile. And if we did a million dollars of pipe replacement in Millenocket and placed a mile, that's almost four years of fifteen hundred feet a year. It's almost. Uh today, it's pushing two million dollars. So you get about half out of the dollar that we used to. And that fifteen hundred feet, that'll cost almost four or five hundred thousand dollars instead of one or two hundred thousand dollars. So we've probably got two or three million dollars to jump at some point at today's prices. Uh and that's an investment that will put pressure on user rates when we make it. Uh so when we do make that investment, we want to do it, you know, with the community's needs. We want to do it addressing our weakest points in the system. Uh and we want to do it wherever we can address water quality.
It's like your what problem you said, is Millenocket is a pretty good situation. Out of your twenty five communities. So you have other communities that require priorities, that infrastructure money becoming available and you're applying for that. I understand across the board, there's many communities that are being receiving money of the fifty million. They're talking two or three million a mile. Two to three million dollars would be required just in Millenocket alone. Four hundred million seventy four communities in the state, not all of them have water systems and ministers and so forth, but a vast majority. Then you see the smaller communities, plus the population falling in trying to getting those funds versus a larger urban community.
Well, the drinking water SRF program actually has very well defined criteria for prioritizing projects. First and foremost, the water utility asks for a five, to say, we would we request this funding. And then the project requests are evaluated by the program um based upon first and foremost, public health challenges. If a water system is failing to meet the drinking water standards and the public health standards, those are high part, those are the highest priority projects. Um if the distribution system is failing to deliver levels of service because of breaks and leaks and interruptions of service, that's the next highest level. Um and then if it's a if it's a high quality issue or an age and condition issue, which is the bulk of the projects that seek application. Um the program will select based upon available funding and a criteria system that goes into the details like, is there a coordination project? Is there offsetting funding from agency? Is there matching funds from somewhere? So our applications tend to bring matching dollars in, so we score a little bit higher. They also consider shovel readiness. Have you done the design work? Your plans in place so that if we give you this money, you can put it to work immediately. So there's a lot of little scoring criteria that come in to sort out through the bulk of the projects.
One last question. How much work have you already planned for Millenocket qualified in terms of background work necessary?
Well, we have a comprehensive system plan posted capital leads and our assets across the system. We maintain that plan. Um that's where the efficiency project at the treatment plant came from. Uh and that's our highest priority because it's an immediate dollar for dollar improvement we get over our cost of water and water quality at the same time. Uh so we made application for that project. Uh we have not applied for any specific distribution system replacement projects because quite honestly, we prefer to wait for the municipality to help us prioritize what streets should be excavated services should be. We don't have any portions of the distribution system today, I would say, must be replaced this year, even next year. We don't have those kinds of emergencies here.
Thank you, Councilor Frank. Councilor Braden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have six uh comments, if you want me to start them now. Uh first one is from Randy Jackson. I had to put in a thousand dollar filter system to get rid of the Ferguson pond smell. Susan D. Alessandro commented, yes, the pond smell, the pink mold and black mold. I have, I too have a filter system and recently got my water from the spring. Sharon Decker, we have all new water lines. Leave a glass of water for twenty four hours. It's cloudy. It smells like a frog pond. This has been an ongoing issue for years. We tried to use less water to save money, which no longer is possible to do the changes to minimum use. Over fifty five percent of our town is over sixty years old. Do not get a broken water meter. That is their fault because they will refuse to remove it, so it will freeze. You will be charged for the water that ran due to its breakage. We fought with this company. All they want is money and not give us drinkable water. Even my dog gets sick when she drinks it. Chuck Pringle, a question for Maine Water when appropriate. Now the water meter reading is electronic when the reading being taken inside a Maine water vehicle as they drive through Millenocket. How much longer will it need, will it be needed to have and pay for salaries for two people in the vehicle? Seems like a waste of a salary and our money to need two employees to take the roving meter readings. Thank you.
Thank you for those public comments. I would like to stick those to the rate increase discussion. Water quality issues are of course important. Uh a number was provided to discuss that. And we as a council certainly will represent uh any other concerns that the community has, so those will be noted. And we can deal with that in a different format, but for now, we'll stick to the uh the rate increase discussion. Any other public comment?
I'm Sandy Sullivan and um it irritates me to hear it's only a dollar a month or it's only three dollars a month because private oil is an expert, two hundred dollars a month. The gas station for me to fill up my tank is an extra twenty dollars a month. The grocery store now is an extra two hundred dollars a month. Um and meanwhile, Medicare or social security gave me a twenty three dollar raise. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? Councilor Mador.
I'm sorry, uh even though we have had a had a serial relationship over the years, uh I I don't want to imply anything of the service or quality of service that Maine Water has provided to Millenocket. People who work for you are dedicated. They are very good at what they do. And I think Millenocket is very well served by their presence uh in saying that I think that along with council of the human, I drink my water right out of the tap, even though it does seem almost brings it on the bottom of the district. Uh but uh no, and I uh I know people have issues with quality of the water and things like that. And those individuals or groups need to be addressed in those situations. But I think overall, the quality of our efforts operated in Millenocket is very good. And I think that's I have been a responsible company within the elements of Millenocket. I don't want those two things to cross. Uh even though I'm going to oppose this rate hike again with my believing it is not because of quality of service with. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor. Unless there's any other, yes, Councilor Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I will be brief. And I just want to thank you for coming and addressing the council tonight. For me, it was an educational uh opportunity of just a couple of years on the council. I didn't know a lot about this issue and um you spoke in plain language for me, so I understood um your responses. I appreciated the questions from the councilors and hearing from sort of the whole issue. It's a learning experience and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilor Danforth, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to uh mention in full transparency. At the request of uh council of the conversation, uh previous council, we we did uh as a municipality, filed for your status in um in this rate increase proposal and uh given a recent conversation with the public advocate, uh and I thought that I would make it known that the extension from uh April first to April fifteenth was made for individuals who would like to uh file for every other status uh for this rate increase. Just making that note.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unless there's any other comments, I'll uh turn it over to you if you want to have any closing comments.
Just wanted to let you know that we appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight, answer your questions. Um this is a process that's in front of us at the Public Utilities. We make a proposal and parties to the case challenge us. And this is the nature of public utilities. We are a monopoly. We understand that. Folks don't have a choice. Uh we need to be challenged. It doesn't need to be adversarial, but we need we need to defend and explain our operations the same way you review um all the town departments. And we expect to be held to similar standards and we will be. Uh so we thank you for participating in the process. Look forward to it. We understand it. Uh if you have any questions about the process, we're happy to assist in any way that we can. Um but we look forward to moving through the proceeding. We will end up, Councilor Mador, I'm not sure. Um but we will go through the process together and thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you for coming and speaking and answering all the questions from the council and the public. Much appreciated. Uh now I'll move on to the town manager's report, Mayor.
Good evening. This report was submitted. I hope that folks had an opportunity to review it ahead of time. I will uh be giving somewhat high level overview of my report. Noting that this is uh this is the first report since uh making the change in inclusion of department reports. Um so moving forward, that will be the second meeting of the month where we do a more expanded report included. Uh of course, unless there's anything you know facing a high level worth noting condensed version. Uh so we have completed the initial draft of the FY twenty three questions. Uh and we are, we are hoping to start um workshops in the next week, April twenty first. We have identified some possible barriers to the scheduling of that, um given uh given some recent responses from council. So we will not confirm that yet, but we will uh continue to look at a good date to start those workshops. So we have invited the school board to attend our council meeting on the twenty eighth of April. And at that point, we will do our uh combined audit review with our officers. Um it was requested, uh so we are seeking a discussion this evening about possible installation of guardrails along your path. This has been discussed recently multiple times. Uh and it's it's been a recurring point of frustration for years. Um and essentially guardrails could be an ability to illegally park vehicles and fall snow into that area on that side of the road. So you know, that is, those are the two um highest those are the two most common complaints that that we get um from citizens in that area. Uh and we we have recently seen the quote of what that cost. Uh the total cost if we went from the Catholic church all the way to the turn onto um East Terrace, that total cost would be about fourteen uh thirty four thousand dollars. And if we were to do just the section from Main Street to that corner, uh that would bring us down to nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. Uh so something to discuss this evening. Uh another request that came about at our last council meeting was regarding mental health uh information included in the police report from the East Millenocket Police Department. Uh so I did have a conversation with Chief McDuff and he very did oblige and provide that information. I included a report uh from him along with my manager's report. Um the question was regarding uh the increased number of mental health uh related incidents and uh how many of those calls included uh different individuals as opposed to maybe the repeat um individuals involved in those calls. Uh so I'll run down through a few of these numbers real quickly. Uh for mental health related incidents, um over the past month, we had forty nine incidents, twenty three different individuals. Um suicide threats or attempts, that is seven individual, uh seven incidents in five different individuals. Hospital security details due to violent mental health patients, uh that is medicine details, that is the same individual. And panic alarm at Millenocket Regional Hospital due to violent mental health patients, that is four calls, uh it included two different individuals. Uh so you have some more clearer information to work from there, uh that you consider that before. Uh I did get an interesting phone call from a uh former contact of mine. Jim, you know, he's a senior area manager uh with the Small Business Administration. Uh and in our conversation, we uh we looked at possibly having um SBA office hours hosted here at our tower office. Um and we think that would be a good opportunity for um business owners, entrepreneurs in Millenocket, uh community members to have an opportunity to come in. and, uh, community members to have an opportunity to come in and be with, um, representatives from the, uh, Small Business Administration and understand the resources partners that they work with. Uh, so, you know, it could be, uh, great opportunity to put some of those resources in front of, uh, business owners and, uh, help to promote some economic development activity in our area. Or at least, um, aid it in a small way. Uh, since this report was submitted, we did land on the first date. And we are looking at May twenty third, uh, May twenty third, and the town hall from one to three, we will have a senior area manager, uh, for the state of Maine. Uh, here in our office, uh, to consult with business owners and potential architects. Uh, we will get that as well. If that goes well, we may be able to continue that on a regular basis. Uh, you know, if the desire is there to keep eating convenience and getting out of the resource. For regarding the, um, bicycle pedestrian safety meeting, public meeting that we had, um, the date here that's included in my report is Tuesday, April fourteenth. We'll understand very soon that that is, that is a fictitious date. That was a very long day when I was, uh, forgive me, that was actually Monday, April eleventh. Uh, we did have that meeting and had a great turnout. Uh, there were roughly thirty community members, um, that attended live in person, um, and another twelve fifteen that logged on, logged on Zoom uh, to, to see and hear the presentation from Tom Aroco, TY Lynn, and, um, others who joined from the Department of Transportation uh, to talk about the potential, um, suggested changes to the Southern Street Court to, um, provide improvements for bicycle pedestrian safety. It, like I said, the, the attendance at that meeting was, uh, encouraging to me. It's a good start to the point. I'd like to see more involved in the conversation moving forward. Uh, and I think that we'll see those numbers grow. It, it was great to hear over an hour's worth of great, um, questions and constructive comments. It was a really lively conversation there, um, towards the end of that meeting. Uh, that, that video recording of the presentation with the narration from Tom uh, is live on our YouTube channel now. Uh, and we certainly encourage our members of the community to log on, watch that, listen to the reasonings, um, and then provide any feedback or comments, uh, that you wish to meet here at the town office. Uh, I am available by phone, seven two three seven thousand. And, um, always available by email manager at millerocket.org. Uh, we have until the end of the month to, um, continue gathering the feedback and then, and then share. Uh, I wanted to make note that we do finally and officially have a community initiatives director. Her name is Kelly Lee, uh, and she started this role on Monday, April eleventh. She really did jump into the role with great enthusiasm, uh, and is making introductions to partners and colleagues, um, anyone department heads to explore their needs, um, as well as, you know, working with me to create, um, a good vessel to, to take input from the community on, on, you know, other potential, uh, projects that we can put forward that would that would benefit the community. Not everything will be able to happen quick or easy, um, but it'll be really, um, beneficial to have a, uh, an ongoing list of, of things that we can prioritize. Better the environment around. Uh, the things that had transpired after I submitted this report, I want to include briefly. Um, we were able to submit, um, two applications to the congressly directed spending, uh, programs that opened up recently. Uh, so we had applications in regarding, um, airport projects as well as, um, a big ask to, uh, attempt to finish the sidewalks and lighting project here in the downtown corridor of Millar. Previously lived in a CBPG application, um, and was cut due to the increase in cost related to the projects. And related to the congressly directed spending, we provide a number of letters of support for other organizations locally, uh, working in partnership. A common goal. So we were able to provide letters of support for Millar County Regional Hospital, um, our Centon and Webernet Public Health and Wellness. So, you know, however, many of those applications, if any, get, uh, get approved and are awarded funds. So we, we are better off as a community. We're happy to participate as partners. Uh, there was recently an announcement of a career day happening at, um, Centon Higher Education Center, Denver Tree. Uh, the associate academic being there, if any folks know of this area, um, that reached out to me about participating from these panel. Um, and I plan to, I think it'll be great to maybe bring a couple of our club heads along and, um, talk about the opportunities that are out there for, uh, you know, working in the municipal public. Talk about how great a career path that could be, so. We'll read that when I conclude my report this evening. Um, have any questions or any comments?
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Um, just before I go to the public and to the, uh, council, um, you read the, uh, report from Eastern Lockwood regarding mental health. There's a paragraph following that that I think offers a really important context, uh, that I'd like to read. Um, after listing those numbers, um, the chief wrote, obviously, many of these individuals that are involved in the above incidents have several other involvements with the police. However, those involvements may not rise to the level to be coded in regards to mental health. Additionally, officers deal with other individuals that are known to have mental health problems, but also those interactions do not meet uh, the level to be coded in regards to mental health. There's no doubt mental health incidents have increased dramatically over the last few years. We have seen an increase in violence in regards to some of these incidents. I'm thankful for our officers for our officers in the surrounding situations to bring those individuals to calm resolution so they can receive care. But that was important context and, uh, um, any councilors have any comments on the manager's report? Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first off, I'm glad to see that you're getting the, uh, culture of the process getting started from this one. Uh, I'd like to see that happen as soon as possible because it's a long and, uh, really some of that archer's process through what, uh, you're starting to get the federal, everybody's our municipalities concerned. Uh, as far as the, uh, guardrails on Highland Avenue, uh, I, I'm favorable to guardrails to resolve the problem that has been happening, that's been, uh, born inside of the town for many, many years. Uh, I, I think it's, it's an easy fix to a, a continual problem. My thought, though, uh, and as the manager brought for different prices, my thought would be from, going from the elbow of East Terrace uh, along Highland to the intersection of Highland and Fifth, I think that would suffice to take care of the process. And that would be the, the process, I believe, that's around nineteen thousand five hundred calls to that. And I think that would be a, uh, good place, uh, to have it. I think that would be a lot of a situation, uh, and I think that would be money well spent. Uh, I really appreciate the manager and the chief, police chief, uh, for the information. Uh, it was, uh, as I suspected, on some instances, but the chairman is right in the paragraphs that he read, that it is not an all inclusive situation. There are lots of people out there who are having real issues, uh, who definitely may not fall within parameters of code for those issues. But nevertheless, uh, police department, we have the excellent job. Uh, I was just curious as the, especially with the incidents, violence at the hospital. Uh, and that, that I was concerned that this, this is multiple individuals, you know, happening, one individual, one incident, one time, or is this a repeat individual or something? And is there something that, uh, through community health and outreach or whatever, can help with the situation? Uh, I know this is a call for the, um, social worker within the community and able situations. And I think rather than have more violent or situations, I think that's would be a good situation. At that night, I encourage, uh, the public, for select, it deserves to attain a social worker area to handle. As far as the fight, um, publicly, I thought that was, uh, I agree with a very good turnout and a very good dialogue. A lot of, uh, information and, uh, I shared my feelings, which I don't wish to surprise people, but, uh, I, uh, I, I thought it was a good dialogue back and forth. I appreciate all the words involved and setting that up so that as far as our new community initiatives director, I would like to welcome her aboard. And I would caution that the smart boy had overwhelmed her with a huge list of asks right off the bat to kind of rather than get, let her get her feet and let's slowly move her into a position because I'd rather see this be a long, uh, I'd rather see this be a marathon rather than a sprint as far as her, her working within the community and municipal government. So let's take it easy on her and get her and, uh, I appreciate the fact that application file for both year for project. These applications are even paid. Jobs are even that's all. With that, I'll say thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilman Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to run out of this a little bit, I'm sorry. Last time we talked about this, I mentioned, I had everything. And, uh, it's definitely a nuisance, but, um, I, I'm having a hard time looking to spend upwards of thirty thousand dollars to install a guardrail in actions of really one person. If it's more than one person, I'd like to know the other person was, but, um, one person was generally attracted to that. That's a lot of merit there, um, as well. So back to what I was saying, the, uh, I would, I would hate to see the tax rates more than I can pay up to thirty thousand dollars to one person's actions that, um, I, there would, I'd just think a little bit more enforceable since before this time, there was really no action being taken on one person. Um, I think we should try to interview some other, um, method than just dishing out the cost for the guardrails. Um, I think it would be a quick fix to the problem. I think it spends a really long person's actions, uh, just try a little bit harder. That, um, I'm also there. Um, good note from the issues department, um, on the stats. Thank you. Like the office hours as well. Do not let that take away all the good work that they're doing to that. I appreciate this one. Um, and welcome aboard as director. Uh, I will just say, I, I know this person, uh, recently jumped straight in with enthusiasm. Uh, I don't know if there's going to be slowing anything down, uh, when it comes to, it comes to, it comes to that, but, um, glad to have her on board and interested in the process. So thank you for talking about.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first of all, when I got my package, I thought, where's all the papers? I remember that you went to the five, went to the monthly report. I'm sure, um, uh, the department heads were happy about that piece to come around. Regarding the guardrails, so when I first read this, I said, okay, that will take care of the problem. And this is giving the breakdown. There's two scenarios, you know, is it the thirty about four thousand dollar cost and like two thousand dollar cost? And then anyone just said, let's do something differently. So I'm not quite sure where to land on this and I'm wondering if Ralph would speak to it. I, I like to hear from the public standpoint, um, based on our conversation.
Now, so see, yeah, that's, that's quite a bit of money to spend. People problem, it's not an infrastructure problem. We're going to spend that kind of money, I think. So, so I think that's an enforceable, you know, it just needs to be dealt with. So that's my any questions?
Answer my question.
It's really not something that the public works can do anyway. So I have to contract it out. That's why I've reached out to my vendor.
Uh, Ralph, this is, as you know, you've been here a long time. This is, this is one individual. This is only recent. This has been something that's been going on, uh, as far as climbing across into the field. Uh, we've had complaints years and years of complaints of runoff down the hill. People have backyards and homes along Canob Scott Avenue. Uh, we have had, uh, complaints of saw it.
Do you have a specific question for Ralph?
Yes. Is, what does it take for public works to, uh, restore, uh, that section of, uh, ground every year? As far as, I know it's not a graveyard since, but all across the last twelve or fourteen years, when I think I would have taken
He built that whole one last year, but that I think it it's around seventy, I think it just took me a our time. Let's go there. I mean, it's impossible. We did build the whole one last year.
Mr. Manager.
Um, in the, as an addition to the council agenda, as I knew it was likely to come up in conversation this evening, I included the most recent letter that we sent to, uh, the homeowners of President Longview Highland Avenue, uh, indicating the complaints and the reasoning of complaints. Uh, and then also identifying what we are doing moving forward. That is, uh, you know, instructive, that it's more police prone issue. Our tickets and valuable tickets for, for the damage across that and every stormwater across the street as well. So, uh, we have made that process known. Uh, we have not had to act on it yet. Um, so we do not have data on what improving the situation, but we may very well, uh, Ralph, this next, this next season and in this next winter.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any other councilor questions for Ralph while he's up? Thank you, Ralph.
We also have signs installed on all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding, um, your the other funds, um, that are so first of all, thank you, Mr. Manager, for making sure that our applications are um, funding for the so next in line, I was jumping the yards. So next in line tomorrow, the website, uh, counting our, our, but it's the rest of the app funds. website, how many opera, opera funds, the rest of that funds, hundred and fifty five hundred dollars. Around that, um, based on what I understand, we're allowed to submit one application. It's not multiple applications, like you could. So we need to put our heads together again to figure out what do we want to go for. In light of that, um, Councilman Jordan talked about um Kyle letters and that this one I did on Cletus. Had lots of conversations about going um in on an application of some sort to hire, to find the funds, to go after the funds to hire social worker. That would help us um and help the peace department and help our community um better know those mental health cases and break into uh subsidies or that's it. So that's sort of on the table too, when we're thinking of where are we going to get the funding for potential Chinatown social worker to help with some of the mental health crisis that we're facing here. So we've got some things that we need to talk about, I guess, on the um council level. How to roll up getting this funding, knowing that tomorrow is the meeting of the funding opportunity. So let's think of that, so I just wanted to keep that on our radar. Um, around the public, um, the public meeting for Mike had um pulled it out, I agree, there was lots of great feedback given um there and um our town manager had said that the um recording is on our YouTube channel and that's available and that you're looking for that um till the end of the month. I just want to make sure people are aware the feedback is for T M I L in our engineers. They're finalizing their report to present to us. This is feedback on our next steps, it's just so that they can finalize their report, apparently bring the P O T and all this guys. So we're still looking for the public comments around what we shared, some of the ideas, so I just wanted to clarify that. And with that, um, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Danfor. Councilor Palteer.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I'd like to agree with uh Counselor Qun's comments regarding the manager's report. And I'll add that regarding the guard rail issue on Highland, I think it's a little premature to consider that this year. I think we ought to give a chance to the uh finding and charging for any other repairs that we have to, or even snow removal, if somebody does push snow across the road, we can have the town remove it and charge them for that cost as well. Uh, as far as the opera funds, I'm curious to hear whether or not because we have asked for proposals in the past, have we received any? That'd be a question for the manager.
We've received, uh, received exactly zero.
Pardon?
Uh, no, Louie, uh, Councilor Palteer, we have not received any requests.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard here with the loudspeaker, the way it's uh, well, anyway.
There's been no request.
Did I, did I hear right that we haven't received any?
That's correct.
Oh, okay, well, you know, I maybe we could speak, speak to it and uh and request that one more time. Uh, should, we should have an idea what's being requested before we consider it. Uh, thank you, it's good enough for me.
Mr. Commander. I just wanted to make note in this moment during the section on manager's report of the audio and technical issues we are facing at the moment. I urge those to keep that in mind as we
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we discussed many of these, I'm going to go through the notes that I had made a couple of days ago of on, on the report. Um, first of all, I I do want to make it known, I enjoyed uh the department reports. All of what was going on and making sure both of the councilors will be aware more than just sitting here getting your secondhand type of assessment of what's happening, to be of understanding. Um, reference to the uh guard rail proposal, um, I was opposed. Um, and I did go up several times and I remember a couple of years ago when we did it, I brought pictures down of records of large chunks of asphalt. So from your basically, what the fourth worst director was talking about to repair, repair to the grass and leveling off the lawn. Few years ago, we had a significant amount of asphalt and stuff that was torn up and pushed over into that area. Of course, I'm sure that that asphalt was much more than seven hundred dollars, probably probably in the four-figure areas, at least on repairing those to the side of the road and stuff. Um, I think the problem there is a lack of enforcement. There's signs up there saying no parking, uh, no parking, no plowing, uh, type of thing. And probably, I think there's three signs up there, there probably should be about five, even though we know the problem really is on one end of it. And we should be towing the vehicles or towing anything that's parked over there. Uh, and they can recover that vehicle, uh, in agreement with some towing company that we might want to set up and find them for that. And I think we should be finding them for plowing, stow across the road. And cross the town crew knows it, they went through their store time today, so we're having snow stones and they can see them pushing. So, uh, I would suggest if I want to change the code, we could probably find the homeowner, I think we should find the homeowner and the person doing the following. Person doing the following will put it in the question, he's being fined as well, knowing that it's not following the uh guidelines of the town ordinance. Following the uh, the, the snow goes off of the property that's coming off of. Uh, in reference to the chief's, this uh letter, in the statistics, I had a conversation with the manager. And I would like to suggest that the, the council advised the manager, at least for little market. Uh, I hope that the neighboring communities would all send a letter stating concerns to the uh commissioner of mental health. The governor, the legislators that are present in the House and Senate, uh, the state departments, state government that has a department of mental health. Our enforcement should not be dealing with health issues. And I bring this forward because of the three years that I was in effective I shared about the main county association, it's something that we dealt with constantly. The complaints in the main sheriff's association of having to deal with mental health problems. So it's all our enforcement process more than addressing this because of a failure at the state level. And a failure of national legislation that was changed in the nineteen eighty's that uh eliminated a lot of coverage of the mental health time period. Um, that this needs to be addressed and I think it needs to be constantly put on in front of them. Uh, so I was going to, we would ask the manager to send all this report uh to the uh commissioner, copy the governor and the rest of the delegation. And I would include the county commissioners and Troy Martin, the sheriff of Scott County. Hopefully that they would follow up and uh send, follow similar letters to the state in their failure to address the mental health. I'm just no longer in the entire state space. Um, I appreciate the uh managing outreach to, you know, uh, getting S B A coming in here and have meetings available to people that are interested in starting businesses and existing businesses uh for how there are programs in S B A that might um, Amber, um, I'm seeing her um down there, hopefully she'll get her bigger desk so she can handle, has more projects put on it. Um, this is a marathon, uh, like all marathons, you trainers, they won at full speed, so. It's super good, uh, thank you for the report, um, and
Thank you, Councilor Gray, and I think councilor's opposed to honor being sent and the manager, which you have to correct sounds regarding mental health issues. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for doing that. Councilor Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, to start off the guardrails, you know, I suggested that um, as a last resort, I definitely think the homeowner should be responsible for everything that is happening up there. But I want to bring up two points. Um, the Catholic Church is up there and they have mass every Saturday and Sunday, and not one person who attends mass parks on that lawn. Why is it that the homeowners think that it's okay to do so and the people that stay at their house? Um, another point I want to bring up is it's not just vehicles that are parking up there. But snowmobiles have been driving across and have witnessed it firsthand, snow, uh, snow this time of year when it gets low. People on snowmobiles who are local will find it necessary to go up there and rip up the field when there's very little snow to protect the grass. So it's not just vehicles that are damaging this, we brought up plows and everything, it's also A T Vs and and um snowmobiles, so I want to keep that in mind too, but I definitely think the homeowner should be responsible for paying for it. Um, as for the mental health, I really appreciate Brad Fitzgerald and Chief McDonald for bringing this data to us. Um, cause I was also interested, as Councilor Dora brought up the last time, I was very interested in seeing the numbers and it's very depressing to see them on paper. Um, it's, it's not a good thing in our area, uh, having witnessed it firsthand. Um, I want to welcome Amber, it's great, and I also agree we should not lower her plate. Um, and the career fear, the career fear. I think that's a great idea. Um, I hope that it turns out great and I hope you have tons of people that come to you and the department heads and, you know, show interest in wanting to do the things that it will eventually need to be done by the younger generation. So I'm hoping that it turns out well, thank you.
Councilor Ryan, any other council comment?
Um, I'll just add that I also agree with Councilor McQun's assessment of the guard rail. I feel we should certainly stick with enforcement at this point and see where that goes. Um, overall, though, as, as a report, I am very, very pleased with how many items on here um are just checking off a list of so many things that we wanted as a council for a while and are now seeing kind of fruition. Even just enforcement of some of these issues that we've been talking about, I know for at least a decade. Um, so to see this come together in this regard and have uh ever meet as a new C I D uh position is very exciting, it's a very important role in town. Um, so just a big thank you to our manager for really organizing um all of our thoughts and desires, obviously representing uh the community's needs and really going with it. So thank you, Mr. Commander. Um, any comments from the public on manager's report?
Several. Um, Susan De Alessandro, thank you for your attention to the mental health issues we are facing, often tied to the S U D issue. It helps for people to know what exactly is going on, knowledge is power for much needed change to happen. I'm unsure where ARPA money stands with any of the towns, but it might be good to consider joining the other towns to help fund a social worker to work with the East Long Lake Police Department. Chuck Pringle, my public comment regarding the proposed guard rail, I agree with those who have advocated not to pay for the thirty-five thousand dollar guard rail at this time. Based primarily on the single incident, make the offenders be liable for any incident repair costs if appropriate.
Thanks for the public comments, Councilor Gray, for meeting them. Any other public comment on the manager's report yet?
I'm sending through school street. I grew up on I don't think that was the answer. I think forcing our, they are not enforcing more than slow on call, try get one that's enacted all in, something down on it. You know. This town has one that seems to put them in there for reason. Thank you.
Any other public comment on the manager's report?
Mr. Commander. Just as a response to that comment, uh, we have processed East Long Lake Police Department recently about one of those ordinances in partnership with our in go enforcement officer. Uh, and that agreement and support is in place, uh, since that agreement has been established. We've had to take that action uh to that extent, but uh it is there as often moving forward as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Commander. Any other public comment on manager's report? Councilor Danfor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to let the manager know that I'm willing to assist you in the letter um that Councilor Gray has asked um to write and to send to numerous state agencies of you know, I think um, it's a matter of the hospitals and some other, someone who said that he very, very bitter teacher of the colleague, so I'm happy to work on that again.
Thank you very much, Councilor Danfor. And with that, I'll move uh to new business, Councilor George, if I could have read order number fifty-two twenty-two, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number fifty-two dash twenty-two, providing for the execution of the warm town warrant for April fourteen twenty-two. Now, warrant for April fourteen twenty-two in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and five cents fifty-five. Seven.
Close to my Councilor, second by Councilor McQun, have you heard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a few, we have nine thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars, seventy-seven, seventeen seconds. It will shed for each shoe, uh, sixty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars, eight cents. That is our, our, the municipal work complaint, uh, thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighteen cents that goes to the water chambers right there. Uh, water bill and hybrid rental, uh, fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents. That's going to the municipal review committee, that is going tipping fees. And seven thousand, nine dollars and eighty-three cents that goes for oil, that is fourteen.
Thank you, Councilor Dora, uh, any comments from the council? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, favor, Councilor Gray.
Hi.
Councilor Danfor.
Hi.
Councilor McQun.
Hi.
Chair going by, Councilor Dora.
Hi.
Councilor Bragg.
Hi.
Councilor Palteer.
Hi.
Order pass instead of zero. And Councilor Dora, if I could have you also read order number fifty-three twenty-two, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, order fifty-three, two dash twenty-two, providing for the execution of wage war warrant for April fourteen twenty-two. It is worth the wage war warrant for April fourteen twenty-two, thirteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-nine cents hereby approved.
Close to my Councilor, second by Councilor McQun, have you heard?
Uh, we got one little, a couple of pushes here, uh, six thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-three cents that goes to the association, that is our comp and two thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-three cents. Uh, I guess that's
Thank you, Councilor Dora, any other council comment? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none, back to council, favor, Councilor Palteer.
Hi.
Councilor Bragg.
Hi.
Councilor Dora.
Hi.
Chair going by, Councilor McQun.
Hi.
Councilor Danfor.
Hi.
Councilor Gray.
Hi.
Order pass instead of zero. Uh, Councilor Bragg, if I could have read order number fifty-four twenty-two, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, order number fifty-four dash twenty-two, providing for hearing for approval and application for malt vineous and spirituous liquor license for boatman bar and grill. It is ordered that the attached application for malt vineous and spirituous liquor license hereby approved, possibly Bradley Fisher, nineteen oh three Co, Inc., three eighty-five River Road, Benton, Maine, Boatman's Bar and Grill, ten Medway Road.
Thanks. Close to my Councilor, second by Councilor Dora, Councilor the council. Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none, back to council, favor, Councilor Palteer.
Hi.
Councilor Bragg.
Hi.
Councilor Dora.
Hi.
Chair going by, Councilor McQun.
Hi.
Councilor Danfor.
Hi.
Councilor Gray.
Hi.
Order pass instead of zero. And Councilor McQun, if I could have read order number fifty-five twenty-two, please.
This is chairman, order number fifty-five dash twenty-two, providing for approval of an application for entertainment license for Boatman's Bar and Grill. It is ordered that the attached application for entertainment license hereby approved for off sixteen minutes street, the pocket to Saz Boatman's Bar and Grill, ten
Second.
Close to my Councilor McQun, second by Councilor Danfor, discussion of the council.
Councilor Dora.
Uh, I just want to say welcome, uh, I have seniorship, I see, and uh I look forward to uh seeing you all up there, um, no special favors necessary, but uh, but, um, anyway, um, but yeah, it is nice to go ahead and see uh some local people uh having a business out there and doing well with it and certainly been a success in their piece so far, so I wish you all the best and glad to see you and you being welcome.
Thank you. There any Councilor Dora, any other council comment?
That was the second one, very well said.
I would second most, very well said, Counselor Madore. Including the first part. Any other uh, public comment? Seeing none back to the council, favor Counselor Frank?
Hi.
Counselor Danforth?
Hi.
Counselor McKeon?
Hi.
Chair going by, Counselor Madore?
Hi.
Counselor Bragg?
Hi.
Counselor Bell here?
Hi.
Order passes seven zero. And Counselor Danforth, if I could have to read order number fifty-six, twenty-two, please?
This is the chairman. Order number fifty-six dash twenty-two, providing for approval of application for malt vineous and spiritualist liquor license for Angelo's Pizza Grill. It is ordered that the attached application for malt vineous and spiritualist liquor licenses hereby approved for William N. Morgan, one High Street, Millinocket, doing business at Angelo's Pizza Grill, one eighteen, and off Scott Avenue, Millinocket.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Danforth, second by Counselor Bragg, especially the council? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none back to the council, favor Counselor Bragg?
Hi.
Counselor Bell here?
Hi.
Counselor Frank?
Hi.
Counselor Danforth?
Hi.
Counselor McKeon?
Hi.
Chair going by, Counselor Madore?
Hi.
Order passes seven zero. Uh, Counselor Frank, if I could have read order number fifty-seven, twenty-two, twenty-two, providing for approval of an application for entertainment license. Right in Angelo's Pizza Grill, it is ordered that the attached application for entertainment license is hereby approved for Dan in or in the High Street, holding on to doing businesses in Angelo's Pizza Grill, one eighteen, and off Scott Avenue, Millinocket. Motion by Counselor Frank, second by Counselor Danforth, discussion of the council? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none back to the council, favor Counselor Madore?
Hi.
Chair going by, Counselor McKeon?
Hi.
Counselor Danforth?
Hi.
Counselor Frank?
Hi.
Counselor Bell here?
Hi.
Counselor Bragg?
Hi.
Order passes seven zero. Counselor Bell here, if I could have read order number fifty-eight, twenty-two?
Certainly. Bear with me, my eyeglasses have gone MIA. Order number fifty-eight, twenty-two, providing for approval and application for a virtual license for Angelo's Pizza Grill. It is ordered that the attached application for a virtual license is hereby approved for William N. Morgan, one High Street, Millinocket, doing business at Angelo's Pizza Grill, one eighteen, and off Scott Avenue, Millinocket.
Thank you.
Motion by Counselor Bell here, second by Counselor Madore, discussion of the council? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none back to the council, favor Counselor Bell here?
Hi.
Counselor Bragg?
Hi.
Counselor Madore?
Hi.
Chair going by, Counselor McKeon? Counselor Danforth?
Hi.
Counselor Frank?
Hi.
Order passes seven zero. Counselor Bragg, if I could have read order number fifty-nine, twenty-two, please?
Order number fifty-nine dash twenty-two, providing for approval of an application for a particular license for the Millinocket variety. It is ordered that the attached application for a particular license is hereby approved for Millinocket variety, CEO Daniel Nelson, one twelve Central Street, Millinocket. Doing business as Millinocket variety, one twelve Central Street, Millinocket.
Thanks. Motion by Counselor Frank, second by Counselor Madore, discussion of the council? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none back to the council, favor Counselor Madore?
Hi.
Chair going by, Counselor McKeon? Counselor Danforth?
Hi.
Counselor Frank?
Hi.
Counselor Bell here?
Hi.
Counselor Bragg?
Hi.
Order passes seven zero. Counselor Madore, if I could have read order number sixty, twenty-two, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number sixty dash twenty-two, providing for approval of an application for a visual, uh, visual license for the blue ox moon.
Order passed instead of zero. Uh, Councilor Bragg, if I could have read order number sixty-five, twenty-two, please?
What are these names? Order number sixty-five dash twenty-two, providing for acceptance, accepting of the Democratic ballot clerks. It is ordered that the following list of Democrats.
Seeing none out of public. Thank you. Uh, Councilor Bragg, sent by Councilor Dorn, especially the council.
Thank you.
Saying none out of public, also saying none back to the council in favor. Councilor Bell here.
Aye.
Councilor Bragg. Aye, Councilor Danforth.
Aye.
Councilor McKeon. Aye. Turned away by Councilor Madore.
Aye.
Councilor Bragg.
Aye.
I guess it's been suspended already. Uh, any discussion with council? Saying none out of public. Also saying none back to the council in favor. Councilor Bell here.
Aye.
Councilor Bragg.
Aye.
Councilor Dorn.
Aye.
Turned away by Councilor McKeon.
Aye.
Councilor Danforth. Aye. Councilor Bragg. Aye. Order passed instead of zero. She turned off here and said aye. Uh, Councilor Dorn, if I could have read order number sixty-six, twenty-two, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number sixty-seven. Uh, sixty-six, I'm sorry. Order number sixty-six dash twenty-two, providing for acceptance of Republican ballot clerks. It is ordered the law rules of Republican ballot clerks that is accepted a two-year term to May twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I will be further reading the order.
You're going to be dangling for a while.
motion by Councilor Bragg.
Second.
Sent by Councilor Bragg, especially the council, seeing none especially the public. Saying none actually the council in favor. Councilor Bell here.
Aye.
Bragg.
Aye.
Councilor Dorn.
Aye.
Turned away by Councilor McKeon.
Aye.
Councilor Danforth.
Aye.
And Councilor Bragg.
Aye.
Passed at six one.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Bragg.
In reference to the last two orders, I want to express appreciation, uh, thinking more recently, one of the discussion about the election security and, and the process of coming ballots and and want to, uh, express appreciation for these people that step forward, um, working together across the aisle, across each other in county, ensuring that our votes are secure and that they're accurate in the town.
Thank you, Councilor Bragg. Any other council comment? Saying none out of public. Also saying none back to the council in favor. Councilor Bragg. Aye. Councilor Danforth.
Aye.
Councilor McKeon.
Aye.
Turned away by Councilor Dorn.
Aye.
Councilor Bragg.
Aye.
Councilor Bell here.
Aye.
Through the seven zero. Councilor McKeon, if I could have read order number sixty-seven, twenty-two, please?
Chairman, order number sixty-seven dash twenty-two, providing for approval of an application for reappointment. It is ordered that the Millenock Town Council approves the appointment. The board of appeals for a three-year term that expired on March twenty-two. Now, Michael's application was received on March thirty-one, twenty-two, and was the only application to this problem. Those were the orders expired soon.
Second.
Motion by Councilor McKeon, second by Councilor Dorn, especially the council. Councilor Dorn.
Uh, while I will support this, uh, I would like to see, uh, council take, uh, as we have seen in the very recent past, uh, people who are serving on multiple boards that may, uh, as they come up for reappointment, they should consider any conflict interest or have, uh, situations where serving on multiple boards may cause a problem down the road. Uh, I'd like to see the council review some of these, uh, appointments as they come forward, coming forward to make sure that we don't have any situations where we have, uh, repeat, uh, like for instance, right now on the Board of Appeals, we have one individual who I believe is, is chair for the Board of Appeals. He's also the chairman of the plant serving at the same time. And we just already said that could be a, a problem way down the road as far as he comes in front of it. I just like to make sure that we've always been so happy to have people all with these boards and everything else. I just want to make sure that you don't have any board. We already had one individual that we have not reappointed because of conflict or could have been conflict. So I'd like to see that review as soon as I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Dorn. Who is that individual that's currently serving on both these terms?
I believe Tony Guar.
Diana.
Um, I don't think those boards have any conflict interest. Uh, you're, I believe you're seeing a personal deal for versus the court of protection.
Thank you.
And Michael George is not on the other side anymore.
Thank you, Diana. Thank you, Councilor Dorn. Any other discussion of the council? Saying none out of public. Also saying none back to the council in favor. Councilor Bragg.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilor Danforth.
Aye.
Councilor McKeon.
Aye.
Turned away by Councilor Dorn.
Aye.
Councilor Bragg.
Aye.
Councilor Bell here.
Aye.
We're passing the seven zero. Uh, Councilor Bragg, if I could have read order number sixteen-nine, twenty-two, please?
Order number sixty-nine, yeah, twenty-two, providing for creation of community gardens. Whereas the Sustainability Committee has determined that community gardens being a crucial component of building so many capital.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we skipped the reading.
The word arises.
There's been a motion and a second. Motion by Councilor Bragg, sent by Councilor Dorn. Discussion of the council. Out of the public, uh, the council in favor. Councilor Bragg.
Aye.
Aye. Councilor Danforth.
Aye.
Councilor McKeon.
Aye.
Turned away by Councilor Dorn.
Aye.
Councilor Bragg.
Aye.
Councilor Bell here.
Nay.
Or passed at six one. Um, discussion of the council. I will, uh, just speak to this since it was suspended. I personally feel it should have been read in full. Just so the public, uh, is aware of where the park will be. It has been generous enough to donate, uh, to this project. Uh, the community garden has been a discussion for about a year. The Sustainability Committee, many more years beyond that of, of the, uh, desire for one. Uh, it'll be located in Crandall's Park. Uh, Stern's Lumber has been generous enough to donate all their fencing materials for the project. Um, also Jane Danforth, uh, with the H Friendly Committee, uh, Millenock Memorial Library, uh, also in cooperation with American Corps, uh, members have all collectively pitched in some extra money as well to go towards this project. So there is no cost to the town whatsoever. Um, the garden will be, um, I guess, started on Thursday. There's going to be a couple different events going on that day, uh, including that. Uh, and it will actually be the ending point for a river cleanup as well. Um, you know, we will be, uh, children, children through, I believe, a, a library program that will also be there to participate in doing some planting of the garden as well. Um, so just a very big thank you to all the community members, um, those serving on the committees, uh, all the committees that have been involved, the American Corps, uh, and especially the Sterns Lumber for being, uh, so generous to donate materials, especially with the costs being as high as they are today. Any other council comment? Councilor Danforth?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to clarify. I know you mentioned my name. I did not personally give funding for this, but I was able to secure some funding to help with this. And also there, um, I want people to watch on social media. Venture the community for best is, uh, April twenty-second, which is next Friday. You'll see some of these flyers, um, about, um, twelve to four and Crandall Park, um, is the, like, sort of, I don't know, the grand opening or the event to kick off on earth, a start of that community garden project. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Danforth. Not only personally did you give, uh, financially, you are the reason that we worked out money financially. So thank you. Councilor Bragg.
Mr. Chairman, I was asked by a person, uh, adjacent to Crandall Park, uh, who expressed, uh, one way that this is going on. I know the Sustainability Committee, there's a lot of people in the community that are not keeping up with municipal activity and municipal affair, which raises the question, were the local residents old as to their concerns of having something cross the street from them?
The local residents were not old. One of the committee members, Gil Strath, lives right there. He's actually the neighbor of the person I think you're referencing. Um, so I was hoping obviously others in the community there would be aware of it ahead of time. I, I did speak to that individual, I believe, today, uh, to address all those concerns involved.
I believe what you said, my question was, no, you did not. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bragg. That was the first thing I said was, no, I did not. Any other council comment? Saying none out of public. Councilor Bragg.
Susan De Alessandro, true community project. Thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Susan, for that comment. Any other public comment? Saying none back to the council in favor. Councilor Dorn.
Aye.
Turned away by Councilor McKeon.
Aye.
Councilor Danforth.
Aye.
Councilor Bragg.
Aye.
Councilor Bell here.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilor Bragg.
Aye.
Order passed instead of zero. Councilor Danforth, if I could have read order number seventy, twenty-two, please?
This order number seventy dash twenty-two, providing for the purchase and planting of wildflower seeds. Whereas the Sustainability Committee has identified locations for highway deployment and pre-imp, how do you say that? Yeah.
Pre-imp.
Pre-imp. Pre-imp on wildflower seeds of course. Central Street for beautification, supporting pollinators and to cut down on maintenance costs. It is now ordered that the town manager is authorized to purchase up to five hundred dollars wildflower seeds. You have count E zero eight one six dash three eight one three, public health and welfare for the inclusion of wildflowers at the locations attached to this order.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Danforth, second by Councilor Bragg. Uh, Councilor Bragg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, we've had discussions in the past about making Millenock more beautiful, doing beautification projects around the area, and several individuals have came forth to this council and, and talked about it. Um, I think this is a fantastic way to do that, and it's relatively cheap. Um, and, and, and it's just absolutely amazing. I think that plenty of community members will appreciate this. I think children will love to see some flowers in their area. Uh, me personally, I'm super excited for it. So thank you to everyone that was involved with us. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, Councilor Bragg. Any other comments? Councilor Dorn?
And I agree probably with what Councilor Bragg said also. Uh, I think first impressions say a lot about community, and I think the way you had and having the locations that are taken that you see here, uh, and having, uh, a beautiful project with wildflowers along there. I think it could only add to somebody's first impression of town of Millenock as it come in. And, uh, who knows? Like I say, first impressions are lasting impressions. So I, I think it's a good start. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Dorn. Any other council comment? Councilor Danforth?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to thank you, um, Mr. Chairman, for bringing this idea forward. And also how quickly, um, Ralph the public works, um, that same day when I need some measurements to some injuries and actually help accomplish a little intervention.
Thank you, Councilor Danforth. Any other council comment? Just also a thank you to Ralph as well for, uh, very quickly, uh, measuring and also just being a part of these ongoing discussions and prove this to the town. It's much appreciated. Um, and just to know this is a pilot project. There are only a couple of small areas we're looking to plant, see how it goes. Um, if it goes well, we can build on that success. If it doesn't, we'll learn from it. Um, and that's the story there. Any, uh, comments from the public? Uh, Councilor Bragg?
Two. Uh, Susan De Alessandro, another great project. Thank you again. And Stephanie Jameson. I'm so excited about that. Yes.
Any other comments? Any other public comment, Diana?
If I may, I would like to see some beautification. Thank you. I would like to see some beautification of, uh, the council instead of the shrubs as that part of this. But I know that it was discussed earlier. Um, however, the, the shrubs are nice, but they bring, so at least flowers would be great. So, thank you.
Yeah, um, just to clarify, these, these flowers will be planted along Central Street, uh, as we come into town. Uh, and then there was another project, tree canopy project. Those trees are being planted in existing parks right now. We weren't able to tie that into the municipal buildings. Otherwise, we'd also have to plant very big, uh, trees as well here. Uh, so our condition of the ground. Councilor Bragg?
Also in response to that, the events committee is working on a project to do something with the front of the municipal building. Um, we were waiting for the CID to be hired, and now that that has happened, we will forward with this project. Yes, yes, it does.
Mr. Manager. We plan on addressing the rubbery bushes and probably this one. So, so I hope to beautify that sooner or later. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any other public, yes. Uh, Stephanie Jameson?
Hi, everyone. Stephanie Jameson, fourteen Mash Boulevard. Um, I just wanted to throw out there that the Granite Street PTO was asked to do some flowers at Granite Street School too. So while we're on the subject of planting flowers, um, maybe we can kind of coordinate and do lots of planting all at the same time. So I think it's going to be a beautiful summer for Millenock.
Thank you, Stephanie. Agreed. And, uh, we can certainly probably collaborate on volunteer, try and maybe knock it out one day. Uh, thank you for bringing that forward. Any other public comment? Saying none back to the council in favor. Councilor Bragg.
Aye.
Councilor Danforth.
Aye.
Councilor McKeon.
Aye.
Turned away by Councilor Dorn.
Aye.
Councilor Bragg.
Aye.
Councilor Bell here.
Aye.
We're passing seven zero. Close to your mic, sir.
No, no, I'm reading them on my phone.
And Councilor Bell here, if I could have read order number seventy-one, twenty-two, please?
Order number seventy-one dash twenty-two, providing for the execution of site analysis agreement. Whereas the Sustainability Committee has identified a one and a half acre, no, a hundred and twelve acre plus or minus acre parcel of land on Central Street as the potential site for the new fire public safety building. And whereas the committee has concluded that the, that a third-party analysis of the site is required in order to inform the committee of the site's viability. And whereas two thousand five hundred dollars will be expended from account E one three zero zero dash nine nine zero two capital improvements slash capital reserves upon execution of the attached agreement. It is therefore now ordered that the town manager is authorized to execute the attached agreement.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Bell here, second by Councilor Bragg. Um, and I'll just, uh, add some narrative to this as well. Uh, this is also a very long, ongoing, uh, discussion in the, uh, committee regarding building a new fire public safety building. Uh, we've been inventory uh, basically every potential site in the town, uh, that this building can go. Um, not every public member, uh, has been in favor, so I did include some of their opposing uh, views and why. Mostly their concern was about the high cost of land. This is the Elks land across from the Chamber Building. Um, some of them also expressed concerns, uh, about response time. Uh, we have had our, uh, fire chief at every single one of those meetings. Uh, we certainly, uh, addressed every one of those concerns very thoroughly. And, uh, towards the end of all these discussions, you can see all the meeting dates here. There are quite a lot. Um, towards the end, there has been no opposition, uh, once all that information and discussion has concluded. Uh, so this would basically just look at that site before, uh, the committee makes any recommendation to the council on purchasing land. We want to make sure that traffic study is being done, that we're looking at the site itself in terms of being viable for rebuilding, especially for that function, um, basically doing new diligence. And with that, I'll seek any other council comments. Saying none out of the public. Also saying none back to the council in favor. Councilor Bell here.
Aye.
Councilor Bragg.
Aye.
Councilor Dorn.
Aye.
Turned away by Councilor McKeon. Aye. Councilor Danforth.
Aye.
Councilor Bragg. Aye. Order passed instead of zero. And Councilor Bragg, if I could have read order number seventy-two, twenty-two, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Order number seventy-two dash twenty-two, providing for reimbursement of whereas the community garden project raised some concerns for residents about the quality and safety of the town's compost. And whereas the University of Maine and Alpha Analytical provide appropriate soil testing to address safety and health concerns for general public. And whereas Brittany Gruder, the, the grants coordinator for Thrive and Opska has paid for the sampling of town's compost site to the above referenced organization in order to expedite the process to get results before the community garden event. It is therefore ordered that the treasurer is authorized to reimburse Brittany Gruder in the amount of five hundred and twenty-five dollars for the testing of the town's compost site from account E zero eight one six dash three eight one three, Public Health and Welfare.
Motion by Councilor Bragg, second by Councilor Danforth. Discussion of the council. Saying, yes, Councilor Bragg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I also want to point out, because I did not know that the University of Maine did soil testing until I read this order, and I actually reached out to them to get my own soil samples. It's relatively cheap if you're not getting into mass quantities like this. So I highly recommend anybody who is curious about their soil samples at their house, camps, or anything, to reach out to the University of Maine, University of Maine, to get a kit sent to your house. They send it directly to you with instructions of how to do it. It's very, very easy. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bragg. And, and just to, uh, clarify, there are two different samples here. One of them is through University of Maine, which is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's to do sampling of the soil to test its overall fall. There's a second test going through Alpha Analytical, which, um, tests much more volatile compounds such as PFAS. So that, that was a bigger expense. Any other council comment? Mr. Manager?
Really just wanted to offer an apology for the confusion which led to, uh, the need for this reimbursement.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any other council comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Dorn?
Yes, even though, like, I will go ahead and go along with this, uh, I would like to go ahead and I'm reassuring the public that the, uh, compost site is not, uh, unhealthy as of right now. Uh, it has been used time and time, year after year, for a long time for gardens. And, uh, if you have noticed in spring, how many people take a vent to the compost site, go ahead and be perfect and fill in their gardens to be able to add nutrients to it. Uh, and I won't, you know, I'll go along with using it. I think it's fine. I'm attached. Even said, I'm not going to pose a test. I just don't want to create a public panic if, if, if there's something wrong with the compost or the compost site, you should avoid it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Dorn. I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, that came after, uh, some community members were concerned about the quality of the soil, uh, for the community garden specifically. That was the plan of using it for that. Um, and the apology that was recently made by the manager, there was room in the budget, extra room in the budget, a budget line for extending this. He was under the impression that because it was funded, it could be spent. Um, and because of the timeliness of the garden event, um, Brittany was, uh, basically put out the money ahead of time, uh, hoping, of course, that it would be, uh, reimbursed, just to give the backstory to everyone. Any other council comment?
Mr. Chairman. Councilor Dorn was concerned with the public's, uh, perspective, thinking that there's something wrong or there is something of, of, of a danger, and there is not, uh, at least not far. But like I say, I will support this in some way anyway, but it is certainly in no reflection that there is something wrong or you should stay away from the compost site.
Thank you, Councilor Dorn. Any other council comment? Saying none out of the public?
Um, I want to thank you for having that. This PFAS scare, so, so now we, okay. That's not so. Thank you very much.
Senator Chief, Councilor Bragg.
Susan De Alessandro, I'm very glad to hear this.
Thank you, Susan. Any other public comment? Saying none back to the council in favor. Councilor Bragg.
Aye.
Councilor Danforth. Councilor McKeon.
Aye.
Turned away by Councilor Dorn.
Aye.
Councilor Bragg.
Aye.
Councilor Bell here.
Aye.
Order passed at six zero one. Councilor Dorn, if I could have read order number seventy-three, twenty-two, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number seventy-three dash twenty-two, providing for insurance budget increase. It is ordered the Millenock Town Council transfers from the undesigned, unsigned front balance to the following accounts to cover the increased premium cost for bonds, general liability, public officials, employee liability, auto, this is auto and property insurance. One, five thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars transferred to insurance to Insurance Department E zero two zero nine, down budget. And number two, two thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars transfer to Protection Department E two two zero zero wastewater budget.
There has been a motion and a second. Motion by Councilor Dorn, second by Councilor Bragg, especially the council. Saying none out of the public. Saying none back to the council in favor. Councilor Bragg. You look at Leon, Councilor Danforth. Councilor McKeon, turned away by Councilor Dorn. Councilor Bragg.
Aye.
Councilor Bell here.
Aye.
Order passed instead of zero. Councilor McKeon, if I could have read order number seventy-four, twenty-two?
Um, certainly, uh, order number seventy-four dash twenty-two, providing for authorization for donation for the sheet ground maintenance. It is ordered that the town council provides a donation of one thousand dollars to Bobby Allen shoot trail and other items necessary maintenance trail. It is further ordered that town manager and treasurer are authorized to spend one thousand dollars from account E zero eight one six dash three eight one public health and welfare for
Thank you. Motion by Councilor McKeon, second by Councilor Bragg, especially the council. Councilor McKeon.
Remember, I will be standing on this order. It's my honor. But I wanted to, to, um, just appreciate written in the numbers this path. Um, and really, I think a couple of years ago, we gave the five hundred dollars to help on this. This one thousand, that five hundred, we've been come close to what she's put in her own personal time and materials. And, uh, she actually was able to get a lot of discussing, chatting with the town. Uh, but I, I appreciate, I had no knowledge that it's had, you know, even come to fruition. And when I saw this, I was like, that's awesome. So just thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McKeon. Any other, Councilor Bragg?
Is she accepting volunteers?
I would imagine. She would be a volunteer volunteer.
Perfect.
Thank you, Councilor Bragg. Councilor Danforth?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In support of, supporting this, um, it was actually brought up by the H Friendly Committee that go on board. We really, um, want to work on more community projects, beautification projects, maybe you guys. She's done a tremendous job and starts to keep, like, starting this. So, um, we need to and like I just mentioned, she's spent countless hours and thousands of dollars that are all into this. So support this and we're going to get her some help right now.
Thank you, Councilor Danforth. Any other council comment? Councilor Bragg?
The reason why I brought up the volunteers is so everybody knew. But I really think that high school students should be reached out to that are looking for community service hours to help with this. I think it'd be a great idea for them to help out and possibly even the youth committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bragg. Any other council comment? Also sad, also a big thank you to Bobby for the tremendous amount of work over many years, um, beautifying the area of town. Um, that's like, will be sporting it. Any public comment? Saying none back to the council in favor. Councilor Bragg.
Aye.
Councilor Danforth.
Aye.
Councilor McKeon.
Saying.
Turned away by Councilor Dorn.
Aye.
Councilor Bragg.
Aye.
Councilor Bell here.
Aye.
Order passed at six zero one. Councilor Danforth, if I could have read order number seventy-five, twenty-two?
Yes, order number seventy-five dash twenty-two, providing for authorization of land agreement at municipal airport. Whereas the municipal, whereas the airport manager was approached with interest and leasing one acre of land for agricultural purposes from Stephen Goldie in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars per year. And whereas the leased land would be used for the planting of sunflowers and grapes that will not interfere with airport functions or future construction. It is now ordered that the town manager is authorized to enter into lease agreement with Stephen Goldie for agricultural use at the municipal airport.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Danforth, second by Councilor Bragg, especially the council. I will be going down to speak as a public member, but I'll be speaking to, um, direct. Any comment from the council? Chairman. Councilor Bragg?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I had a conversation with you before the meeting, and I did have this question about this. And you had pointed out to me, I'm tired of that, that you had leased this acre or an acre or some land up there several years ago. I, um, take the blame in late, late years. I got too much of this up here at Stanford, told that. Uh, but I did have a couple of questions. Uh, first of all, was preference to establishing what I thought would have been new policy of leasing land. And I'm familiar that we had talked years ago as a council, previous council talked about, just And I'm familiar that we had talked years ago as a council, previous council talked about just leasing a lot of land along. For airport, aircraft carriers and so forth, as plans in the airport and do that. But this seemed to me, having read this, this is a new endeavor of going out and doing this. Um what this ought to tell us is how many years, it's a year, it's un, it's unopen ended. Uh and I think, you know, if it's a yearly thing or if it's, you want it for five years or ten years or whatnot, I think there should be some clarity. In where leasing that land. But I appreciate the timing of this, because we're coming into growing season and we're always a good plan of the better that is. I had suggested they were asked earlier, it would be okay to table this for until the next meeting, so we can find some of those things that I could raise. Think else, some type of public policy by council dealing with plans adjacent to that, to that. We talked about um solar power, we talked about the airport hangars and so forth. Uh I'd just like to clarify how we go on with individuals who may now want to start, but we got a thing along that that we have some type of standard policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Braden. I go down and just answer yours and any other questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman, before you leave. Before you leave, I would suggest that you name an acting chair while your, while your aggression was told, somebody would handle.
Can I name Councilman McKeon as acting chair?
I move, uh, Councilman McKeon.
All those in theater, Councilman Braden.
Hi.
Councilor Danforth.
Hi.
Councilman McKeon.
Hi.
Chair Goldie.
Hi.
Uh, or standing, excuse me, Councilor Mador.
Hi.
Councilman Braden.
Hi.
Councilman Bellteer.
Hi.
Uh, Councilman McKeon, welcome back.
Yeah. I know, right? I'm.
Speed building, eight high streets. Um, so as was mentioned, um I did. Uh use a piece of property in the same area on the airport about four years ago or so. Um, I know Councilor Mador was on the council then. Um and essentially I was just planting some uh sunflowers and other things that I was using for a national food company at the time. Um, I planted it in an area, uh actually, well, too late in the season, but in an area that otherwise would have to be cut and actually uh at the cost of the town. Uh clearing, so I cleared some of that land, plant for a while until it was cleared too late in the season. I haven't done anything since then. Um, when Councilman Craig has spoken to me prior to the meeting, he suggested the policy. Uh be created and I actually feel that's probably a better approach. Um, so I would support it being tabled, um just so that more information could be provided to the council lines of the public. Uh on how the land would be used and maybe procedure going forward on how airport land needs to be phased out. Um, so I'm fine with that. I'm not a rush. Um, I have grapevines coming. I'm going to start a small vine here as my plan. Um, and uh it comes mid uh next month, whatever next month is. And. That's where my head is at at this point. Um, any other questions or comments I'm happy to answer.
Councilor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'd like to make the motion that order seventy-five uh twenty twenty-two be tabled. Uh until a policy can be established for this type of acquisition.
Second.
Motion to do by Councilor Mador, second by Councilman Braden. All in favor? Councilman Braden. Will call. Councilman Braden.
I'm all set. You said all in favor, I raise my hand.
Oh.
Yes.
Councilor Mador. Hi. Standing. Hi. Councilor Danforth.
Hi.
And Councilman Craig.
Hi.
All right, uh, it's Councilman Bellteer.
Hi.
You can tell I haven't done this in a while. Thank you. Uh, the motion is tabled until next meeting. All right, thank you.
Motion ready to call.
Let's drop. Oh, until all two together. Okay. To the council, am I allowed to relinquish my rights as chair?
Mr. Chairman, temporary chair, I make a motion to uh re-nominate you as the chair.
Second.
Uh, motion by Council, second by Councilman Braden, all in favor. Will call Councilman Bellteer.
Hi.
Councilor Mador.
Hi.
Chair Lee.
Hi.
Hi. Councilor Danforth.
Hi.
Councilman Braden.
I shook your worship's edge. Thank you very much. I appreciate this exercise. Councilman Bellteer.
Oh, hi.
Thank you. All right, with that, I appreciate that.
Is it a date?
Councilman McKeon. Um, clearly news to be back in the raw. Um, and also clearly a sign that it's eight ten at night for all of us. So with that, Councilman Craig, if I could have you read order number seventy-six, twenty twenty-two, please.
Order number seventy-six dash twenty twenty-two, providing for technological upgrade in the manager's office and council chamber. It is ordered. That the town manager is authorized to extend up to seven thousand five hundred dollars from the outside on balance on technological each the better. Virtual media accommodations in the town manager's office and in the council chamber. Note, equipment purchase will include a, an AV card, computer, three monitors, projector, two cameras, conference table. Microphone, conference table microphone, mounting hardware, iPod, tables. In protective containers.
That. Motion by Councilman Braden, second by Councilor Mador, especially the council.
Mr. Chairman. Councilor Mador. As you can usually see, but the way this council meeting and other meetings, like, try and go ahead and. Become technologically supportive of our community, uh it is, is, is irony. Uh, as I said before, I brought it up, I have to go forward to trying to go ahead and see if we can get uh technology in here for the twenty-first century, not the fall. So uh I I will support this and I would like to see it move forward and institute it as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mador. Any other counsel comments? Councilman Craig, my. Um, I will just also add, I think it would be a very great thing to make these upgrades, but also to help the manager and manager's office, especially for hosting meetings. And just being a part of a more modern era, in the sense that a lot of things are technological. And the ways that we're trying to move forward, I think, uh, we're currently very impaired in that regard. So, um, I certainly may support this. Any comment from the council or from the public? Councilman Matt Ragan.
Well, uh, the tablet and this mic has also failed tonight, so I'm going to try to talk very loud. Um, Matt Ragan, I did it like it's straight. I want to make it very clear that when I built this, I had no correlation with my business and I'm not receiving any money doing this. I'm going to abstain from the vote. Our list. Um, but I wanted to bring this to you guys to answer any questions that you guys might have. Uh, this recent design that me and Peter. Uh, talked about yesterday, made four months, was the original plan, was to have something in here. You took into account, uh, Madam Ward's communication with uh the port being up here, uh, joining us. We didn't want it to damage, to get destroyed. This is very expensive equipment and. But then me and Peter picked out, we want it to last. Uh, so a lot of the things that we picked, we picked newer equipment that's barely out on the market. It's barely used. Um, and we want it to last, so we picked some very high quality stuff. Uh, as you can see tonight, we've had multiple hardware failures that I've not even gone into. Uh, but this would solve a lot of those issues and if future councils, we want this to last. Uh, have somebody manage it very easily. So the AV card will basically have a whole setup on it that can be pulled in and out. With no issue whatsoever and someone will eventually be trained, whether it be Peter. Uh, or someone to handle it, to be able to do this by themselves if I'm not here or if Peter isn't here. I I'm willing to answer any questions to the equipment, the price point we got to if anybody has some questions.
So Matt, thank you. Did you, did you say that you're basically just helping put this together and it has no relation to your business whatsoever?
Correct. It has no correlation with my business whatsoever. I did this strictly on a volunteer basis.
I think we're all volunteering in a lot of different capacities. If you're not benefiting financially or anyone else, it's up to you on how you want to vote. But I see no reason for you to be saying whatsoever.
I'm still going to abstain for other perception. If any of this comes back and anybody complains, there is no correlation with me and my business. There is no.
Thank you. Any other council questions from Matt? Seeing none, back to you. Any other public comment? You don't need to put an accent on any point in the agenda, does the order. Thank you for the nice visual display.
Extreme.
For our quality place. And we got to the uh.
Your take, that, that might not work.
Mike, your quality place. We got the uh, the IT upgrade. Do we have anybody that works for that other department, the school system? Involved in IT? Do we hire people or are we already paid someone um to do what you guys just discussed?
We have no one uh hired to do that function now.
Okay, so how does the IT move from the school system? You know, how does the IT get upgraded and integrated with our school system? How do the kids learn? The last two years while they were in homeschool?
The school system is, has an entirely separate budget, an entirely separate way of operating.
Yes, I, I.
So they have someone designated as an ITU person.
Okay, but is the school department? A department of the town? That, that's my question.
Technically, yes, but we do not have any interference in how they operate.
Okay, so there's no overlapping of.
There's no overlap whatsoever.
Trades.
We only accept or reject their overall budget. That's our only function.
Okay, so they're totally petitioned by the. What goes on with the town?
Yes.
Okay, all right, uh, second, second part of that. Is there any COVID money? And I know you're only talking seventy-five percent. But in the last couple of years, did the town, or could the town receive additional funding? Is there, the year of COVID money still floating around? Yes, in essence, this is all country fruition because of COVID predominantly. Um, so the question is, is there either grants or federal giveaways for this set of town pay? Thank you.
Thank you. That is a good question. Um, the only funds that I'm aware of currently that we have is some funds. Um, that could be applied to this. We haven't designated as a council how many of those funds would be used yet. Uh, that could be a potential source. Um, in fact, that's actually the source that the manager was uh also looking at pulling from. And I basically explained to him that I felt we hadn't decided as a full council how we would spend our funds yet, especially with more public input. Um, so I instructed him, uh, at least for the order, which of course could be amended, to uh take it out of the assigned fund balance. And so more conversation you can have. Councilman Braden, Matt.
Uh, Matt Ragan, I did it like it's straight. I also want to point out that we also wanted to try to save some money. So we did reach out to the school, um, and tried to obtain smart boards. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for doing that. Those smart boards are so outdated, they are not viable for us to use. We'd basically be replacing the equipment. We looked into purchasing new ones, but we're talking upwards of twenty to thirty thousand dollars for one board. Um, it it's extremely expensive for those new smart boards and honestly, for what we could save for money, seven thousand five hundred dollars for everything. Uh, we'd be saving a substantial amount of money if we didn't go with what the school had to offer or replacing equipment. Or again, using equipment that will eventually fail. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any other public or council comment on this? Seeing none, back to the council, all in favor, Councilman Bellteer.
Hi.
Councilman Braden.
Stand.
Councilor Mador.
Hi.
Chair Billy.
Hi.
Councilman McKeon.
Hi.
Councilor Danforth.
Hi.
Councilman Braden.
Hi.
Passes six zero one. And with that. Uh, reporting communications, our committee for the April twenty eighth council meeting will be Councilman Bellteer and Craig. You're both good at that.
Damn.
For the twenty-eighth.
Okay, I'm not sure.
Okay, well, Councilman Bellteer. Well, uh.
If I'm here, I will.
Sure.
If I'm not, I'll shoot you in the.
Little dog. Councilman Braden. Uh, moving on to chair of the mayor's board, any mayor's board, Councilman Braden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I want to apologize to everybody for the events committee. Um, we had a very small group of people that attended the last meeting. Um, so this meeting, I wanted to come with a lot more. Hopefully more people will show up. Um, but we have some very, very exciting news and we're hoping to send a proposal to the council. Um, so I highly encourage anybody who's interested in the Fourth of July and all the plans that we've made, cough, cough, we made it into a three-day event, cough, cough. So I encourage anybody who is interested in what's going on for the Fourth of July to please attend the next meeting. We want all suggestions. We want all comments, so we can make this a really good year to come back to with uh with limited COVID restrictions. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Braden, Councilor Danforth.
Can I first ask, when is your next events?
So with the new policy, I have to send it to the doodle pool. Um, I was waiting for the CID to be hired um before we made any scheduling, because I wanted to add the plan that we had for the front of municipal building onto it. Um, so I will be sending out a doodle pool in accordance with our new rules, um, hopefully tomorrow morning, assuming everything goes as planned.
Thank you, Councilman Braden.
Yes, thank you. I'll just give a quick, quick update of the H family. They had a meeting on Tuesday and went over the action plan. So we now have a draft action plan that I need to present to the town, uh, to the council, and I hope to have that ready for you, um. Prior to our next meeting, part of being part of the network of H family. That we will create an action plan that is for school, so it's, it's part of the framework. Um, so stay tuned. I guess you want yours now from me.
Thank you, Councilor Danforth. Any other chair committee reports? Uh, next sustainability committee meeting is actually tomorrow at ninety AM in the manager's office. Uh, it'll also be available on Zoom. That's all posted online. Uh, we're going to continue looking at housing issues among others and just want to send a, or say a brief thank you to the council for. Uh, seeing the value in all the projects that we've been working on for quite some time. Um, and with that, we'll move to the two-minute public comments.
Hey, folks. This is an interesting view. Um, so I'm stepping on this side of the podium. Uh, my name is Cody McKeon. I live at eighty-one Bowden Street, in Long Island. Uh. I'm coming up here, Gabby is the new chair of the Trails End Festival Committee. Um, and I say that with a core team of players that are involved, Stephanie Jamison and. David and Ken York. Um, and and more players that haven't officially been, I guess, invited to the meeting. Um, but I'm, want to give you guys the dates. We have officially set a date for the Trails End Festival this year. Uh, it'll be September ninth, tenth and eleventh, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Um, at the Moro Park, Crandall's Park. Um, as we all know, the festival discontinued due to COVID. Uh, we weren't able to continue that festival, but uh if there wasn't, uh, if COVID hadn't happened, um, this would be our, I believe, fifteenth year. Uh, this festival's been around a long time and it's, it's something that I think over the course of its beginning. We've continually tried to open it to more networks, more people, um, and really have this a three-day community event. So more information's going to come out. I'll be on the lookout for that. Uh, we are currently in the process of transferring uh digital resources, some stuff that we've had for quite a while, but also just transferring like Facebook media. Page, um, website, et cetera. Uh, I can announce there is a, a communication line, at least. We don't have a phone number, but um. Trails End Festival at gmail dot com is an open resource for people to uh reach out with any needs, um, any questions. I will say, we're just getting our feet off the ground. We had our first meeting this week, um, but we're, we're going on right. Um, we have the benefit of having some organizational history of our networks and. Even though it might be a new core group of people taking on the festival, um, don't let that fool you. We're ready to bring on the festival that this community knows and loves, so um, thank you for that and for the follow.
Thank you very much, Cody, for taking that on and all of us, as you mentioned as well. Looking forward to the event. Any other public comment? Matt?
Matt Ragan, I did it like it's straight. Uh, I missed a very vital thing during that order that I wanted to mention that I feel like is very important for the public to know. Um, we've had some massive. Um, we've had some massive issues at the town hall streaming one site as we've learned in past meetings. And the cost is some, a fair amount of money, uh, to do monthly. So the new setup that you guys have recently approved, we plan on streaming directly to Facebook for a huge portion of our public users, um, which they'll get a notification if they follow us on Facebook and they'll be able to watch straight from Facebook. Um, will reach way more people in the public. Um, it will just be like a streaming service. People will be able to comment, um, but they will be able to watch. So this will reach many, many more people in our community that I've already heard very positive things about. But I wanted you all to be aware of the public's view where that streaming to Facebook is kind of the future. Thank you.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Matt. And you too.
And you too.
Um, certainly we've made significant strides at being transparent and open to the public. Much thanks to our new manager. Um, this is another great step. Thank you. Any other two minute public, every counselor can go up and speak if we want. Counsel Danforth.
It's not public comment. I forgot to make an announcement. Okay. Fair enough. So the hospital is going to start booster clinics again, public booster clinics for increasing capacity to start. And so, um, you are eligible to get a second booster if you're fifty years and older. And those eighteen years old and who are indomitable, the first public booster procession will be Thursday, April twenty first. So we know that that's next week from three to six in the gym lobby. And then the following, then will be April twenty eighth. So there are going to be three Thursdays in a row and then main event, um, again from six. So that's an opportunity to get your second booster shot in the local hospital.
Any other public comment? And seeing none, I think a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Counsel Braden, second by Counsel Mador, all in favor, Counsel Palatier.
Hi.
Counsel Palatier, or excuse me, Counsel Braden. Nate, Counsel Danforth.
Hi.
Chair Billy, by Counsel Mador.
Oh, hi.
Counsel Braden.
Hi.
We are adjourned six four.